And we did have an executive session at 6:00 to discuss the town manager's contract for the coming year. This is traditionally what we do. It's usually a little early in the year, but we're going to get it done eventually. And we'll have a little bit of a discussion later on the agenda. The first item on the agenda is always citizens' concerns. Any citizens with concerns that are not on the agenda are welcome to come to the microphone to share them. No citizens' concerns. All right. Next item is chairman's update. There were a number of meetings, there were some meetings last week involving Peter Berry and town manager and me with council, and then with some Acton Water district reps to discuss the Nagog Pond appeal in preparation for settlement discussions, which we hope will happen maybe early next month. Before the discussions with Concord, we will probably have another executive session for the benefit of the members of this board. This Thursday, May 25th, at 6:30 in this room, there will be a public information session about the nuclear metal superfund site cleanup. This is on Route 62 in Concord. There will be representatives of the Environmental Protection Agency, the federal agency, and the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. The focus will be on the so-called non-time critical removal action, which is related to groundwater at the site. On Monday, next Monday, May 29th, 10:00 is the Memorial Day observance, which this year culminates at Woodlawn Cemetery. The parade starts at Acton-Boxborough High School, proceeds up Hayward to Main, to the Town Center for a brief observance before continuing to Woodlawn. On next Wednesday, May 31st, 7:30 PM, this room again, the planning and natural resources departments will be presenting a program on protecting open space via subdivision design. Next Thursday, June 1st, at 5:30 PM, at Maynard Mill at Main in Maynard, there's an open house about the proposed Acton-Maynard bike-share program involving a company called Zagster, Friday, June 2nd, is the Acton-Boxborough High School graduation. And on the future agenda, June 5th, there is an application for a common victualer's license for the old Acton Coffee House location at Great Road in Main, which is notable for people like me who are in East Acton and don't, haven't had a coffee place or any place to go since Acton Coffee House moved to where else, West Acton, where everybody goes. So, that's it. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, we just learned about quarter of 6:00 tonight that our electric aggregation plan has finally been approved by DPU. I'm told by our consultant, Peregrine, that they approved everything except one element. And the element they did not approve was the surcharge on electric rates that would allow us to hire an energy manager. They felt apparently that, since it wasn't in our initial plan when we went to DOER, we put it in later, that they want us, if we want to pursue this, go through the whole process, amend the plan, go through public hearing, DOER again. So, you know, we'll just move forward at this point and see, you know, just get, the main thing is getting up to bid to get the electric rates, which at this point, I'm not sure this is the best time or not. So, we're going to have to talk with the consultant and figure that all out. But at least the good news is we finally got the plan approved. The highway department will be going through some road reconstruction starting this Thursday, May 25th. They're going to be working on Marion Road, Windmere Drive, Woodchester Drive, Central Street from Arlington Street to Mohawk Drive, Flint Road, Kelly Road, Nadine Road, Doris Road, Francine Road, Elkhart Street, and Lexington Drive. It'll be involving grinding, leveling, raising of drainage structures, and putting down a final course of pavement. Also, we were informed by MassDOT that they are going to be doing an emergency culvert repair on Route 111 of the Acton-Boxborough line tomorrow. So, things may get a little disrupted there as well. And finally, just wanted to make the board aware, we've had some new hires in the last couple of weeks. In the finance department, in the collector's office, we have hired Josira Gonzalez. She currently had been working at Jean Dark Credit Union and also a volunteer income tax assistant, tax preparer. So, she is replacing Amy Spinano, who went to work for the Westford Library. And we've hired three new firefighter EMT paramedics. Brett Lisack, that started May 14th. He has been an LPN technician at UMass Medical Center in Worcester, and as well as a fire lieutenant and paramedic at the Exbridge Fire Department. Peter Ballou, who started May 15th, comes to us from Community EMS in Marlboro, where he's been a paramedic since 2012, and also a call firefighter EMT paramedic for the town of Hope Dale. And finally, Peter Imhoff, who started May 16th, has been working for the Cataldo Ambulance Service, where he was an EMTB and then became a paramedic in 2008. So, these are three critical hires as we get ready to implement advanced life support on July 1st. And that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. And we have a few minutes before our first appointment, so I'm going to run through the consent agenda, rather than pick one of the other items. Consent agenda, item 11, request to dispose of obsolete material at the Memorial Library. Item 12, request for full refund building department. Item 13, full refund is requested for the amount of $1,0594.25. Item 13, committee appointment, Dana Snyder Grant, Associate to Full Member Cemetery Commission. Item 14, accept gift Recreation Department, a gift of $500 from Harvard Pilgrim Healthcare for funding a new recreation facility and playground at Jones Field. Item 15, accept gift Recreation Department, a gift of $500 from Debra's Natural Gourmet in West Concord to support the 2017 Summer Concert Series and Special Events. Item 16, accept gift Recreation Department, board to accept a gift of $500 from the Thoreau Club, also in Concord, to support the 2017 Summer Concert Series and Special Events. Item 17, accept gift Recreation Department, a gift of $1,000 from Thomas A. Popson at Mortgage Network, Inc., to support the 2017 Summer Concert Series and Special Events. Item 18, board to accept contribution to the sidewalk fund from Summer Place Definitive Subdivision Number 16-15 as payment in lieu of construction. Item 19, one-day spirit sampling license Ducks Unlimited Noshoba Sportsman Club, June 10, 2017. Item 20, one-day alcoholic beverage license Noshoba Valley Neighborhood Club, NARA, June 17, 2017. Item 21, one-day alcoholic beverage license Integrated Project Management, Inc., NARA, June 10, 2017. Item 22, one-day alcoholic beverage license Women, Boston Women's Rugby, NARA, July 22, 2017. Item 23, one-day alcoholic beverage license Patricia Connolly Nagog Clubhouse, May 26, 2017. Item 24, committee appointment Benjamin Blumenthal, 348-364 Main Street, Master Plan Committee, Acton 2020 Representative. Item 25, committee appointments Emily Ying, Design Review Board, Planning Board Representative. Item 26, committee appointment Barat Shah, West Acton Sewer Action Advisory Committee, Planning Board Representative. And item 27, useful life vote pumper truck. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve consent agenda items 11 through 27.
I'd like it. The question on 27?
Sure. On 27.
What is that?
If I might, the state law changed recently through the Municipal Modernization Act that it used to be you could borrow money for fire apparatus up to 10 years. The law changed to five years unless the governing body agrees that it has a useful life of 10 years. So, when we went to town meeting with the appropriation of the pumper truck this past April, all our numbers were predicated on a 10-year borrowing. So, generally, fire trucks do tend to last that long, so it'd be our recommendation for the board to state that the estimated life would be 10 years.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Joan, just the protocol usually is if you have an item that you have a question about, you just say, "Hold." And I mean, this happened to be at the very end of the list, so all you had to say is, as soon as I read the item, say, "Hold." And then what we do is we go back to the people who have held different items on the consent agenda to find out what the issue is. And if it requires an amendment, then we hold those out, and we approve all the other consent agenda items, and then we approve the sort of, the ones that involve a little work separately. And sometimes we end up holding them and not voting on them until later. So, but that's usually what it is. So, if you have something in future that you want to address or have a question about, just say, "Hold," as soon as I read the item, and then we'll discuss it, so. But in the meantime, Katie has moved to approve all the consent agenda items. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Katie moves, and Peter seconds. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor, say, "Aye." Aye. Opposed, abstaining? Thank you. Now, 7:10, the Acton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing notice on May 8, 27, what? May 22nd? Is this the right one? Yeah, it's May. It should be May, was, uh-oh.
It's correct.
Okay. 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 Let me start all over. The Acton Board of Selectmen hold a public hearing notice on May 22nd, 2017, at 7:10 PM in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room 204 at the Town Hall, 472 Main Street Acton, on the application of Costa Donuts 2, Inc., doing business as Dunkin' Donuts at 315 Main Street Acton, under Section 140 of the Massachusetts General Laws for a common victualer license. The application, applications or application can be inspected at Town Hall during normal business hours. Is there somebody here for Costa Donuts 2? Well, all right. Do we want to just approve it?
I've been told this is just, this is for the existing Dunkin' Donuts that moved from the plaza without your average Joe's to the building next, between your average Joe's and the Acton Medical Associates.
Oh.
Yeah, and it was just that they moved and they need to update this. So anyways, with that, I will make a motion to approve the common victualer license for Costa Donuts doing businesses Dunkin' Donuts at 315 Main Street.
Is there a second? Anybody?
I'll second. I'll second the motion.
I'll second. Okay, so Katie moves, and Peter seconds. That's actually a very popular location, I've noticed it. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hold on. I thought they were saying this was a brand-new license. It's not a renewed.
It is, because-
But they had checked off, because they moved?
Because they moved, so it's a different address, right? So, it's a new license.
Okay. All right.
Are we ready?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor, say, "Aye." Aye. Opposed, abstaining? Done. Let's see. And it's a little bit early, but we can start by reading the notice. And you folks, Mr. Bertolami and your engineer, is that, hi. If you, you know, you can speak there, or if it's easier, if you have, you can sit there and use the mics there. The Acton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on May 22, 2017, at 7:15 PM in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room 204 at the Town Hall, 472 Main Street Acton, on the application of Autoplex 1 LLC for a site plan special permit 303-31/17-465 under zoning by law section 10.4 at 76 Powder Mill Road Acton. The applicant proposes to expand the existing building. The application and accompanying plans can be inspected at the planning department and Town Hall during normal business hours. And I am the assigned selectman on this site plan. It's, this is really, this is Acton Ford, the current Acton Ford business. They're proposing basically to remove some paving that's in the back of the building and expand the existing building to create more space, basically some bays, I guess. So, and we have comments from various departments, planning, engineering, and the water district as well, and the design review board. So, I guess if you want to introduce yourselves and just do an overview in greater detail, that would be great. Do you have to, can you use that mic, or do we have the handheld mic? You're gonna, it's awkward.
I'll try to speak into it if I can. My name is Molly Obendorf, I work with Stamsky McNary, and this is Leo Bertolami. The project address is 76 Powder Mill Road, and I will walk you through the proposed work and site.
Make sure, make sure that the mic, sorry.
So, the project location is 76 Powder Mill Road, and the property fronts on High Street here and abuts the Assabette River. And the Assabette River's associated mean annual high water line projects a 200-foot riverfront area onto the property shown here. The existing building is surrounded by existing pavement, and the modest proposed addition is squaring off the building in the back. And from a stormwater perspective, this is an improvement to the site. Roof runoff is clean, whereas parking lot runoff is not. And we are eliminating 12 parking spaces. However, there is a surplus of parking, vehicular parking spaces existing on the property where it's not an issue. And this was gone through a full staff review, and we've taken the comments into consideration. And we will revise the sewer connection and the dumpster location, and we would like to discuss the sidewalk with you.
And I know, I know Conservation Commission reviewed this, because it is within their jurisdiction, both the 100-foot buffer zone and the 200-foot river, riverbank or riverfront zone, and they issued their decision in December, an order of conditions. So, are there questions, comments from the board? Peter?
If you're not going to connect up to the sewers, are you keeping the septic system, then? Is that what happens?
The septic system will be connected to the sewer. We were asked to not, not connect the floor drains to the sewer. So, that will be revised.
So, these are going to be bays for repairing vehicles?
That's correct.
And you already have those there. And there's some, just from my own information, so what do you do with the oil and the gas and other, you know, effluents that come out of the bays? You have some in-ground?
Yep.
Capture of those?
Yep. They go through a floor drain, and they're captured in MTC gas trap. And from the gas trap, they are put into a tight tank. And that tight tank is pumped very often.
Quarterly.
Quarterly.
Quarterly. And I think there was, was it the design review board that suggested that you do something with the landscaping, plump it together as opposed to spread it out, or something like that?
Yeah, there is a landscaping plan.
That was a change, Holly. Yes.
So, essentially, we will just be replacing the existing plants with an abundance of more plants, trees, shrubs. You know, various locations, they're spread out. I think there was about six or seven before, and there's a bunch more now.
I think the design review board asked if we could bring them together on each side, which we did. And Holly asked if we could change the species on one, and we said we'd do what was ever in the comment to the board of selection.
Okay.
So, if it's there, we'll do it. If it's not there, we'll do as the plan states.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. I would just add that the species, the specimen, it was a pear tree that apparently exudes a really offensive odor. I guess it's very popular, because it's very hardy, but it, yeah. And there were some, you know, slang terms for what the tree smells like, which I will not go into, but it is pretty offensive. And Holly just suggested that you find something that's equally hardy, decorative, but without the smell, but anyhow. So, Katie?
And we called Randy, the landscape architect, and told him to make the changes. And if he had any questions, just email Holly. So, that's already been done.
Great.
Katie?
Yeah, my, well, I had two questions. My silly question was, there were changes on the interior. There was something that was just labeled Dave's Office, I think was his name. I was just curious about who he was, because he had this really big, there were like all other things that were for specific, you know, uses or whatever. And then I can't remember if it was Dave or Dan or somebody like that. So, that was my silly question about who Dave is and why he has such a big office.
Is that on the architectural floor plan?
Yeah, it was in the floor plan inside. It doesn't really matter. I was just curious when I was looking at it. He wasn't on the original, on the current state. It might not be Dave. It might have gotten us anywhere. Is that big one in the middle there?
David.
David, yeah. See? David's office, yeah. Do you know who David is, Leo?
David's my partner.
He's your partner?
I am the president of Acton Ford.
Yeah.
And we own the Autoplex Group.
Right.
I do, but I don't spend that much time there.
But David does.
David is the managing partner, and that's David's office. No, I don't have one that-
Well, he got a nice upgrade.
Actually, I do, but I don't use it.
Well, David got a nice upgrade in this change, so that's good. No, and my only question was, you had mentioned the sidewalk contribution, and this might be a question actually for planning. So, when the building was initially built, was there a sidewalk, was there a contribution to the sidewalk fund, or why are we asking for one now, when there's sort of no building along a new frontage?
So, I don't know the answer to that question, if there was one originally, but this building was constructed quite a long time ago. Do you, I don't know if Leo remembers, but we could look into that. In the past, the Board of Selectmen, for an example, with Hartz Corporation, when there's been minor amendments or changes to a site, and there is no sidewalk along the frontage, or in a situation where, you know, they could add one, and they didn't previously add one, then it's basically put into our comments for the Board of Selectmen's consideration.
Okay. And the calculation was based on the entire frontage of the building as opposed to just the addition?
Correct.
Okay. Leo, do you remember if there was a previous sidewalk contribution?
I think the lady next to you would know.
That was serious.
Welcome back, Joan. I don't remember. The original site plan on that project was done in 1975, and I was not the owner.
Yes, probably not. Okay.
And we didn't have a sidewalk situation in those days.
Yeah, you're right. Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I would say probably not.
Okay.
But what I can say, if you want to take the comment now or later, I've pretty much sidewalks that whole area. So, if you look across the street to Acton Ford, the sidewalk comes out of the Dunkin' Donuts, goes right down the front of Powder Mill Plaza, then it crosses over to the Acton Ford property, then it takes the corner to go across Route 62. It connects out to the bridge. Then I laid the sidewalk on the canoe landing, which I leased to the town, and I laid the sidewalk on the Quick Lane building, which was right across the street. So, there's plenty of sidewalk there for people to walk it, and they do. And I feel on this particular project, if you want to go there right now, that it sets a, less than a 3,000-square-foot addition. We'd like to donate $5,000 to the sidewalk fund, and when we do the big addition, we'll donate whatever we need to. But there's plenty of pedestrian access from Dunkin' Donuts all the way to, pretty much, Main and Supply, because I did it when I did the Prescott Building. We had that wide open. And the Board of Selectmen did not want a sidewalk that was, would disrupt the traffic flow. There is some up by the air vent for the system in front of the Prescott Building as you head towards Maynard, but that's all. So, once again, I believe there's plenty of pedestrian accent, access, and if you want to take and walk it sometime, I'd love to, but we don't mind doing 5,000 on a small addition, but we do plan to do a bigger addition. And if a bigger addition generates, you know, that type of money, we'd be more than happy to pay it. But on this one, that's where we stand.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Joan, anything? I would just note that typically, we can waive, well, we have the sidewalk requirement, and if the sidewalk isn't built, then we usually ask for a contribution, which is a charge of $50 a linear foot, which in this instance, at least, planning has done one calculation that would come up to about $44,000, which is a big, you know, kind of a leap from the $5,000 that you're talking about. And then the other thing that we have a requirement of is when we have cars parking, we typically require one bike parking slot per 20 vehicle spaces. And so, on your property, that would mean nine bike parking spaces.
That will be addressed also, yes.
Yeah, we have no problem with that.
That will be addressed, yes.
We've been doing that on every project now.
Okay. So, we need, we need to come to terms about the sidewalk.
Okay. If I could make a comment in regards to the sidewalk?
Yep.
The address of Acton Ford is 76 Powder Mill Road. So, in my opinion, it takes up Route 62 frontage, which is only about 100 feet. Even if we could put a sidewalk in, you would never be able to put one in on High Street. So, realistically, we're talking about 100 linear foot-long sidewalk, not an 800 one. And the $5,000 figure, I believe, is very fair. But when we do the large addition on that building next year, we'd be more than happy to, you know, do what the board wants. I mean, we're talking about a 10,000-square-foot addition coming up in the future. So, I mean, that would warrant it. But this is less than 3,000 square feet.
All right. Mr. Berry, do you have any comments about that as a sidewalk committee liaison?
Well, we have, in the past, accepted less than the full amount. I don't know about the $5,000 figure. It is true that there are, there's a sidewalk all the way up, going up High Street, and pretty soon it will connect all the way to Main Street. It's being built, the infill sections are being filled in now. I'm not sure about 62. You say, in front of your Quick Stop, you built a sidewalk?
I built a sidewalk in front of Quick-
Does that go to Sudbury Road on that side of the street?
Yes, that goes, well, what we've done is we've taken the one for the canoe landing, and we've carried that as far as we could do it. I put one in front of Subaru.
On the other side?
On the other side, I put one all in front of 60, 60 Powder Mill Road, which is probably 145, 150 feet. I've sidewalks all of-
60 is Moscarellis, or what? You're talking about which side?
I don't know. Moscarellis, Quick Lane, the one you originally said.
Oh, okay.
So, I sidewalks all of it.
So, you did one on the canoe landing?
Canoe landing.
And the Quick Lane.
And the Quick Lane, and Subaru, and the edge of Prescott Paint. And the reason why it didn't go all the way down Prescott Paint, as I stated before, is the selectmen at the time did not want to, you know, put a channel blocking that, because people would be driving over it. But we did do it down at the end by the-
I think there is a sidewalk on the other side of 62 there, in front of the Pontiac, and it actually goes up Sudbury Road. You know, one of the purposes of the sidewalk fund is not only to get sidewalks built along the frontage, but the, if there's already sidewalks there, we require contributions to our fund, so we can build sidewalks in other areas of the town.
Sure.
So, that's one of the reasons why we have this requirement. You know, is $5,000 enough? I guess I, I-
Peter, what would you like?
10.
If you want $10,000, I'll give you $10,000.
All right. That'd be my recommendation.
Okay. So, we'll compromise on that and say $10,000 contribution to the sidewalk. And are there any other, any other concerns, questions that people want to address? Do we have a, I would suggest the addition, I didn't see reference in some of the language that planning board had talked, or planning department had talked about, but about the design review board landscaping suggestions of clustering the plants, and also about this pear tree issue. But it, you know, I think that there was a comment that the DRB made in its recommendations that the proponent had already agreed to adopt those, those recommendations. So, it's just a matter of memorializing it in our decision, in our, you know, conditions somewhere. So, that would be something that I would suggest we include in the final decision if it isn't in, in there in the draft right now. So, but just, okay. Comments from the audience, and we have Mr. Fredericks, yes?
You know, if we, I just want to, I had a question for Kristen, but I don't know. We can hear Ms. Fredericks first. I just, I don't know, in terms of water, how you want to do it, but I do have a question for Kristen.
Go ahead. Chair.
Tara Fredericks, West Acton. Hi, Leo. Just my opinion, but if someone says that their bottom line is 5,000, and they readily give you 10,000, you can probably get 20. But I, either way, I think that if Leo's offering to pay the whole $44,000, that I think that we should get that in writing. And then I was wondering, Leo, what, what do you charge the town for the canoe landing? I'm curious.
I don't remember what the figure was. They were going to take care of the insurance and do something very minimal, and I have not charged the town not a nickel in the last 15 years that it's been done.
Thank you.
And I've insured it also. It has not, the town, I believe, is self-insured, so it would have been automatically covered, but I insured it also.
Thank you. And the last thing was that there's a lot of people that cross from the Toyota to the other side, and more than once, I had to break because they kind of dove out into the road. And I'm- And I'm wondering if it's time for a crosswalk there. There's a lot of people that cross. Thank you.
I know what you're asking for, but I didn't understand the first part of it. There's a lot of.
Are you talking about Subaru, or are you talking?
Oh, sorry, Subaru, yes.
Toyota's down a little.
Yes, this, uh, I've, more than once, I've, I've had a break for people that are walking across that road, and one time it was a person with a stroller. Thank you.
Okay. Do you want to talk about 61 Potomac Road, Subaru? I'd be more than happy if you want to. It's a different law.
That's, that's, yeah, it's a different, that's a different day, a different discussion, so, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else from the audience have comments about this project, concerns? All right.
Yeah, I mean, I just didn't see a comment from the sidewalk committee, Kristen, so do you know if they didn't get asked, or if they didn't have time to meet, or?
I didn't, we didn't receive any, at least from what I know. So I haven't seen any come into planning, or, well, they don't have access to munis, so I haven't seen anything come into planning.
Okay, do we have, need further discussion, or somebody want to make a motion?
Well, I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Okay. Katie's move to close the hearing, does somebody want a second?
Second.
Uh, Joan, seconds, okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Okay, hearing is closed, now discussion.
I'm fine with the $10,000 donation. Um, so I'd make a motion to approve the site plan special permit, uh, with the, with the $10,000 donation to the sidewalk fund, um, adding a condition that they meet the Design Review Board recommendations on landscaping. I can't remember if this was in the decision or not already, but not connect the drains in the.
I think that, yeah, that was, that was interesting.
So that's just those two?
Yeah. Somebody want a second?
Second.
Joan, second? Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome back, Joan Gardner. Take care.
I am going to skip over because our next appointment is not until 8 o'clock, and I'm going to, uh, Selectmen's Business, Item 8, Board Design Tax Increment Finance Agreement with Insulet Corporation. Uh, we just received the, the final draft, uh, and maybe Mr. Manager, you'd be willing to go through what has happened since, I guess, we last talked about this.
Yes, thank you. Um, the, the main thing, I think, to point out in the agreement, I mean, as, as you recall, Town Meeting approved the tax increment plan, um, in April at Annual Town Meeting. Uh, one of the big discussions we've, we've had with Insulet, and John Narkum is here from Insulet, um, this evening, uh, was the, the issue of, uh, I get what is commonly known a clawback, which means basically if they don't meet some of their employment projection, that they would reimburse the town, um, for some of the taxes that, uh, taxmen of, they have received. So, uh, in the agreement, um, Section 6, I think it is, uh, shows that if in fact, um, that, if Insulet, um, in their manufacturing positions, uh, fall below 250, um, employees in manufacturing, uh, years one through five, they would pay back cumulatively 100% of, of the tax benefit they received. Years six through 10, they would pay 75% of the cumulative tax benefits they received. Years 11 through 15, 50% of the cumulative taxes, and year 16 to the end, 20, be 25% of the cumulative taxes. We had a meeting, jeez, I can't remember, we had so many meetings last week, Janet, uh, but we, we met with the Insulet folks and Janet, myself, uh, Town Council, and Selby to, to work out, um, uh, this issue. So I think we're, we're, we're very happy with the agreement and would recommend that the board sign it.
Uh, comments, questions from the board? Katie?
Thank you, Steve. First of all, I understand the need, you know, for negotiations and, and the timing issue of this, but I'm not super thrilled that we saw this 20 minutes before our meeting started, and it hasn't been posted publicly, or, you know, reviewed by the EDC or anything like that, um, considering that there are some changes from the draft that, um, was presented to the EDC and, and that, you know, we took to Town Meeting. I'm okay with the clawback, um, kind of mirroring the TIF in terms of, you know, only clawing back X percent if it's a, you know, less if, if they stay for longer, but my concern in here, and, and I'm, we can talk about the 250, I'm, I'm somewhat comfortable with that, but my concern in here is that they never say that they will get up to 1,000 jobs, and in fact, it says that within the first five years, just trying to find the page again, I haven't been able to spend a ton of time with this, um, it says.
I think it's paragraph four on page four, I'm looking at.
Thank you. Um, yeah, it says that they will get to 750 full-time employees within five years. We took to Town Meeting 1,000 employees. If you look at the documentation in their local incentive application, everything in here says 500 employees, or 1,000 employees, everything in here, um, including the letter that, you know, we authorized you to send, um, Steve, um, to the state, including, yeah, every, every part of their application says that they will have 1,000 employees, um, 500 new jobs, and 500 jobs that they're moving over from Bilirica. And so I guess I'm really confused, um, and not frankly comfortable signing this document where it only talks about 750 employees. And if we're doing the clawback at 250, I'm not sure why then they're not even agreeing to getting up to 1,000, which is what they've told us all along. So I don't know if you or if John can address that, um, but, but frankly, at this point, I'm, I'm not, I'm not comfortable approving this document saying 750 full-time employees within five years, when I, when I stood up in front of Town Meeting and said 1,000 employees. And again, I understand negotiations, and I can see that, you know, with the, with the clawback, um, but I'm really not, I'm not thrilled with that, and I don't, you know, I don't know the reason, especially, you know, if I was the state looking at this, you know, and saying, well, why is everything in here, you know, every letter and every form you filled out say you're going to add 1,000 jobs, but then your agreement with the town only says 750 jobs? So what's the discrepancy?
Well, I, I could defer to John. I think some of it is the distinction between manufacturing jobs and kind of their, their E and D front office, uh, jobs. But I don't, John, if you want to speak to that? Yes, I think the, um, early on in the process, when we applied, and we're talking about 1,000, we weren't aware of the clawback at 100% over 20 years. So if we were in violation at any point over 20 years, uh, we knew, we understood there was a clawback, but essentially to us, technically, we could be out of compliance in year 19, and never, never reap the benefits of an incentive. So we thought that was, with the 100% clawback, and maintaining 100% for those first five years, uh, for the town, to take under consideration that, um, business things could happen, whether it's a, you know, whether it's an acquisition, whether it's a cure for diabetes, we just thought with us having to accrue and reserve those funds every year, we would not realize any incentive. So to protect us and allow that you to have 100% claw, clawback over those key years, which was the first five years, we wanted to protect ourselves in the event that something happened. That's why we lowered it to 750.
So I'm fine, and again, I'm fine with that, with, uh, doing the 100% in the first five years, and the 75, you know, and the out, whatever, you know, bumping it down in, in outer years, I think that makes a lot of sense, because as you said, otherwise, you know, you really, you'd have to just hold that money aside in case something happened.
Sure.
Um, that's fine. Um, but in here, the clawback only happens if you drop below 250 employees, so it's not even the 750. And again, that, that's okay, but I think my concern is that at the beginning here, it, it then references only going up to 750 employees and not the 1,000 employees that we were, um, that we were told. So it says, because their base employment level, it says that you'll increase 750 full-time employees over the base employment level, which started January 1st, 2017. As far as I know, you have zero employees January 1st, 2017. So it would be 750 employees, um, in, in Acton. So I, I, it's that paragraph that I don't, I don't understand why it's 750 and not 1,000, when the clawback's related to the 250 full-time employees.
Well, again, I think to protect the, the, the 100% to the town, uh, you know, clawback of, of, of all the funds in those first five years, which we, wasn't our understanding of the clawback. We didn't have the details of the clawback at the, at this point. When we found that out, um, in, in order for us to agree to clawback or give back the entire amount over those first five years, uh, we thought 750 was a reasonable number as a compromise in the agreement.
But the clawback's not 750, it's 250.
Well, the number of jobs that we would bring in the first five years.
Right.
Into, into Acton.
No, it, it says here in Section 6, that in, in addition, in the event that the ACC certifies a project, and in connection therewith, the company has failed to increase the number of full-time employees by at least 250 full-time employees over the base employment level, which is zero, um, or if it's fallen below 250 full-time employees, then the company shall reimburse the town in the amounts, you know, again, 100% in the first five years. So that's two, it's if you fall under 250 employees, that you, the clawback would take effect. It has nothing to do with the 750. And so my, I just don't know why then we're saying now, we're not even going to go up to 750 when, or 1,000, when we were told 1,000, and when everything in your, the rest of your applications is 1,000. So I guess, you know, my question is just, is your intent still to go to 1,000? And if it's not, then I have concerns, because I'm not comfortable with this application, you know, saying 1,000 employees all throughout it, um, but our TIF not, not saying that anywhere.
Yeah, no, we, we're very, very confident. In fact, we just got a significant amount of money approved last week by our Board of Directors for additional, uh, work to be done on the site over the 140 million. So, um, we are, we're very confident that, um, you know, and have every intention of expanding even, even, you know, the, uh, the manufacturing operations on site. The reason for the 250 was because in the event that there was a business, uh, circumstances that happened, whether it's an acquisition, the likelihood that the manufacturing would stay is very high.
Right.
It's a unique operation. In an acquisition scenario, uh, nobody's likely to move this facility with the amount of investment that we've made. There is the possibility that, that in an acquisition, that some of the headquarters peo, people, some, a portion, or all of them could be consolidated regionally or into some other area, but we feel very confident that the, you know, the manufacturing employees, um, would not be moved, because they're not going to, there's nowhere to consolidate to. It's a very unique, um, uh, device.
Okay, well, then I, and again, I'm comfortable with the 250 employee level being the level for the clawback. I'm just concerned about this page four, paragraph four under company investment, where it says that, it essentially says that you're only going to increase, that you intend by December 31st, 2023, to increase by or to 750 full-time employees. I want that number to say 1,000. It doesn't affect your claw, the clawback provisions, and it just clarifies and codifies in there that you've made a commitment to get up to 1,000 employees, and that, that's what's reflected in your application to the state, um, and in, and in what we presented to Town Meeting. Again, it, it doesn't impact the clawback in any way, but I'm not comfortable approving it at 750, because it's not, it's not what we agreed to, it's not what I feel like Town Meeting agreed to, and it's not what's reflected in the rest of your application. So it, it, it doesn't, it doesn't affect your clawback, and it doesn't harm you in any way. And so I guess I'm just, I'm saying I would like to see that number changed, and if it's not, I don't, I don't think I'll be supporting this. I'm a very big supporter of the TIF. I, I presented it at Town Meeting, I, I, you know, was happy to sell it, but I don't, I'm not okay with this change to 750.
Somebody else? Comments? Questions from the board? Peter? Joan?
I mean, I just, I guess I'm inclined to, uh, agree with Katie. I, from the time I first heard presentations from you folks, it was you're going to bring 1,000 jobs to Acton. I see a letter here from your, uh, senior vice president, or, let's see, senior vice president and CFO says, "The company estimates that it could relocate up to 500 Massachusetts-based employees to Acton and hire an additional 500 new full-time positions at the Acton facility." So kind of the 1,000 number has been ingrained in people's minds since this was first proposed. And I agree with Katie, if you say 1,000 in that paragraph four, which was your original commitment, doesn't change the fact that 250 is what governs the clawbacks. The 250 number of jobs governs the clawbacks, as I read it, but so.
Yeah. Uh, I, I had thought we had negotiated this with the, with the group, but understand that, you know, this is the, the final, uh, you know, final approval that we need here. Again, we have every intention, uh, we just got $35 million approved last week from our Board of Directors to put in additional, uh, space for an additional line. Uh, so, uh, you know, that, the 250 people that we had was originally for two lines, capability to put in a third line, but we now have the capability to put in a fourth line. So it, believe me, we're committed to Acton, um, this was, you know, worked out in a, in a negotiation that we had on the TIF agreement with Selby and, and, and some of the town members.
Can I, can I make a point first before we go further? I made, I was talking to you before the meeting started about the difference between decertification and clawback, and, and Council separated those two things, because we were kind of getting hung up on them both being together, you decert and then you clawback. And he made the point, and that's why you have two different standards potentially for decert. You could decert if they drop below 750, technically. Uh, and if you decert, if you get the decert order, then immediately, assuming that they've built the new building, then we start to charge them taxes at the elevated level. You know, they don't get the, the tax, the tax relief that they've been getting, and would be, have been getting under this agreement. The clawback is just additional relief beyond the decertification and, and the ability to charge taxes at the higher appraised value. So I, I just want to make sure that you're not overlooking that when you decertify, um, there's a benefit. And I understand, um, that 1,000 was thrown around a lot, um, and as you yourself acknowledge, there are compromises that you make. And for whatever reason, there was some misunderstanding about the clawback provision, and frankly, uh, some of the discussion earlier that I heard was really, uh, from, you know, Insulet's side, uh, it was just much more severe. This is at least allowing us more or less the same format that we had agreed upon with only the reduction to 750. I mean, there were some other alternative proposals that would have been completely unacceptable, I think, to the town. They would have been much more draconian and, and put a lot more of the risk on the town, and basically no risk at all on, on the company, so, yeah, go ahead.
Um, yeah, I understand the difference. I understand that the 1,000 would now, if we changed 750 to 1,000, would be the level for decertification, but decertification is also a statewide process, and it says in here that there has to be a public hearing before the Board of Selectmen in which we consider things, you know, that would affect the company and other issues of the things that you brought up. So it's not as though, it's not the automatic, like the clawback, you know, is, is more. It's not automatic at all, um, and it, and it's part of a state process that the EACC would have to decertify the process, the project as well. And again, in the application, it would be different to me if their application to the Commonwealth said 750 employees, but their application to the Commonwealth for, um, the, uh, it's not for the TIF at that point, but your, your application for, um, whatever, the local incentive program says 500, or says 1,000 employees in it. So it's, it just brings both of these into line with each other and makes them, you know, make, makes them meld with each other. But otherwise, you're saying to the state, hey, give us this benefit because we're going to bring 1,000 jobs, but you're only saying to the town, oh, but we're only willing to say it's going to be 750, and I'm, I'm uncomfortable with that. And we've, you know, sent letters saying that it would be 1,000 jobs, anticipated 1,000 jobs. And again, it's, it's not an automatic, there's a process to go through where they would have to be decertified at the state, we'd have to have a public hearing, we would. to be decertified at the state, we'd have to have a public hearing, we would talk about the issues and, you know, things of that nature that, you know, may have affected the inability to get up to 1,000 jobs. But I'm, you know, they've made a commitment to do that. This is what we told Town Meeting. We were pretty clear on that front. And that's because Insulet's been pretty clear, and it sounds like you still are pretty clear that you're going to bring 1,000 jobs, and you're pretty clear to the state that you're going to bring 1,000 jobs here. So I just want that to be the same. And I don't think it makes sense to having the, I mean, this TIF goes to the state as well. And I don't think it makes sense for, on the one hand, one part of your application to say 1,000 employees and another part to say 750.
No, I could be mistaken because I, I'm not an expert on the either incentive, but I don't think we said we were bringing 1,000 jobs to the state. I think we said we were hiring 600, roughly 600.
I mean, the applications in here say moving 500 permanent full-time employees to be transferred from other Massachusetts site to project location 500. Total permanent full-time existing jobs retained at project location 500, which adds up.
No, but I thought you had said we were bringing 1,000 jobs.
Sorry, I mean, overall, 1,000 jobs to Acton, moving 500 of them from Bill Rinka. So, but that's what the application to the state says throughout it, is 1,000 jobs. Every document in here, from Steve, from Insulet, from, you know, everything in here on multiple forms references 1,000 jobs. And it doesn't make sense to me that then our one document says nothing about 1,000 jobs. So again, if, you know, if it's, I'm just saying where I stand. I can't support it with 750 because I got up and told Town Meeting that it was going to be 1,000 jobs.
People aren't going to consider you a liar.
I don't care. It's not about considering you are.
You know, your full faith and credit is, you know, was part of that, but that's one number and it's a projection. I mean, Steve's letter in March says that it's estimated 1,000 jobs within five years. I mean, it's a rough, you know, it's a ballpark range and it's got to be flexible. And honestly, as I said, given what some of the alternative proposed compromises were, this was pretty palatable. It may not be palatable to you because you want everything consistency, but there's a saying about consistency or something.
That's fine. If you're comfortable with it, that's okay. I'm just stating where I.
But the trouble is if you're not, if you're not going to vote to support it, that's a problem. And Peter seems to be just sort of lined up with you. So. Anybody?
Is there any other number other than 1,000? I mean, do you want to negotiate?
I don't. I mean, you put in your application to the state that you're going to do 1,000 jobs. And again, this isn't related to a clawback at all, and it's not a guaranteed or a, you know, you go below, don't get to 1,000 that we're decertifying you. But if you say to the state that you're going to do 1,000 jobs and they enact it, and the state is part of the decertification process, then it just makes sense to me that they're anticipating that it be 1,000 jobs as well. So, you know, I'm just not comfortable saying to the ACC it's 1,000 jobs, but then saying to us it's 750. It doesn't, I'm sorry, but that doesn't feel very transparent either because I, you know, I'm not going to be there when you make your presentation to the ACC either, you know? And I imagine it will be, you know, that, because that's still your plan by the sounds of it, that you're going to bring 1,000 jobs to Acton, which is a great plan and I'm very supportive of it. And I'm happy to give you a pretty large tax break to do that because I think it's a really great contribution to our town. But I just want that to line up with what is being pitched to the state and what's being pitched to us. And I'm uncomfortable that it's different and I'm uncomfortable about the change. Again, I think that we're pretty, being pretty forgiving on the clawback when frankly, you know, again, there clearly was a misunderstanding. I think we understood there'd be a bigger clawback and, you know, but we were willing to move on that and give what I think is a pretty generous, you know, clawback provision in there where we're not saying we're going to take it all back if you don't meet the, you know, if you don't get to 1,000. We even brought it down to that 250 that you're really confident that you're going to keep, you know, regardless of what happens. So I think that the town has moved a lot on that, and I think that that's fair. And to me, it's, I'm only comfortable with 1,000, but I'm only.
Katie, I'm going to ask, give John a moment to explain to us what happens if you don't get an approved TIF tonight.
Well, if we don't get an approved TIF, the deadline is the 24th, which is two days from now. I think the electronic filing has to be tomorrow, tomorrow evening. And then there's some question about the base, setting the base for the commencement, for the commencement year, whether it's a, which was agreed upon between Insulet and the town, that it would be roughly the $6 million valuation. But apparently with the assessments due on July 1st, that what was communicated and agreed upon between the town and Insulet was the $6 million would be in a reassessed value. Apparently, the reassessed value would be the purchase price, which would be the $9 million. And the agreed-upon amount between the town and Insulet would no longer hold true. So we're under a bit of a, we have to get this submitted by tomorrow evening electronically. So then.
And obviously, if you have a dramatically increased assessed value potentially, then that kind of messes up a lot of the financing, so.
Yeah, it does. It sets the base higher. And again, the town and Insulet had agreed upon, you know.
Mr. Manager, any words of wisdom?
I still feel pretty good with this. I understand what Katie's saying, but, you know, we're still increasing significant jobs and, you know, I mean, the clawback was hotly contested and we had to get a compromise to get this done.
Anything else from the board for now? Okay, audience members?
Tara Fredericks, West Acton, got a couple of questions. Does this take a supermajority? No. So how many do you need without Katie? So, but Peter's leaning that way. I just really want to thank you guys for your level of integrity. As much as we want the company, this is, I have a lot of experience in business and it's a normal thing to squeeze authorities, to put them in a position where they've got a compromise. And so I appreciate your integrity. I'd like to know, did you agree to the eight o'clock start time for the residents on the noise? That's what I would like to know.
I.
Well, this is the Insulet application, right?
Yeah, that's a site plan. This is a different issue.
I'm sorry, but I'd like to know if we're, you know, putting our integrity on the line, if they're willing to agree to what the residents wanted or not. I would like to know that.
It was one, it was one resident, and, and no, we didn't. The final, we just, the final site plan just got signed today, so it'll be on the website.
So I want to think we're holding firm on this issue. Thank you.
Anybody else from the audience? No? Okay. Okay, we have to come to a decision, and I guess we're going to have to vote if there's no further discussion. Does somebody want to make a motion to approve the TIF? Well, that, I mean, I don't know that that's, that's not on the table because we have to either approve the version that's here or not.
Okay, I got to say, I am not happy that this came to us with no time to review it either. But understanding the constraints on the time here and trusting the process of the negotiations between our council and Insulet's council and town manager and the land use director and I guess Janet, his chair, was involved in these negotiations.
No, I was a potted plant.
Okay.
I was, came in just for that one meeting last week, so.
I don't see this as saying they won't bring 1,000 jobs, they're committing, and John, you signing a document that says you will bring 1,000 jobs and then turning it into 750. I mean, all of that troubles me considerably. But given the circumstances, I'll move that we approve the agreement.
Somebody want a second?
I have a question. What is the?
Oh, thanks.
I have a question. What is the vote necessary?
Yeah, it's majority. It's not supermajority. Is anybody second? If you're not going to second, I'll second.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yea.
Abstaining?
Abstain.
That's a pass.
Yeah, I think so.
That's a pass, two, one, one.
Okay, it's majority. Okay.
Except you need three to sign, I think.
I mean, I'll sign if that's a majority of the board, you know, and as a member of the board, that it was your vote, but, you know, I just, I think that this issue could have been resolved. And I think, you know, I don't.
I mean, I would add that the fact that we, I mean, it's unfortunate that this wasn't in our pocket for us to review. That really has nothing to do with, I don't think it has, it has to do with council maybe, but, but not Insulet. So I don't want the onus to be on Insulet for the fact that we didn't get these until.
It was really between our council and their council working.
Oh, blame the attorneys, you know.
Everybody's counsel, but, you know, I, you know, I'll physically sign it if the majority of the board voted for it, but I'm on the record not supporting this.
Okay, so, okay, so we're done. Thank you.
Thank you, board members.
So we just, should we sign these things that we have in front of us? Okay. Okay, eight o'clock, we have NARA Park master plan presentation and parking fee implementation. Oh, yes, we see town staff and, thank you.
Are you set for us, Janet?
Yes, Mr. Tidman. Go ahead.
Thank you. Well, we're excited. We're here tonight just to bring the NARA master plan to you that we've been promising for quite some time. It's hard to believe that NARA Park is approaching 20 years of existence. I can clearly remember back in the mid 90s when it was all just a, sort of a big conceptual dream, this park we were going to build in North Acton. And in developing a master plan, we thought, we thought of several things. We thought as we did the open space and recreation plan, let's do a master plan that's more of a coffee table-like master plan that's very, you know, much full of photographs and things that have happened over the years so that get a real sense of the history of the park and not just a, kind of a dry master plan document that we've done for other things. So that was the premise for the NARA master plan. Make it somewhat similar to the open space and rec plan and take everybody through the history of NARA from, you know, the mid 1990s until now. And again, it's hard to believe NARA is approaching 20 years old. And it seems very timely for us to tackle the NARA master plan now in that many of the folks that worked on NARA master plan or NARA project are now retired. So in developing the master plan, we had to search around and find some of these people to interview them and get information for the plan. Going back in time, the town of Acton had, had been looking for a swimming pond through the 1970s and 80s. It searched all over and NARA was not on the radar at that time. In fact, in the 1970s, the 40-acre gravel, abandoned gravel pit that became NARA Park was slated for Acton's next dump. That would have been the dump. State stepped in and said, gosh, you guys, you know, you have a lot of groundwater wells down gradient of this future dump. There's no way you're going to get your state approvals to put a dump there. So it sat for a long time. And in fact, you can click on one, Kath. So a little blurry in here, but that's, the upper left is what NARA looked like when we first tackled it, when we were first cutting in. It's important that I mention that without the relentless attack and pursuit of Bruce Stamsky and other members of the Recreation Commission through the early 90s, NARA wouldn't have happened. It was just a matter of his pursuit and his just persistence that got NARA, NARA to go. So things started to move forward and by the mid 1990s, the big dig was, had gone from design to implementation in Boston. And suddenly, there was a massive need for gravel in Boston. And excavating the NARA pond and the gravel around the site, we developed, we created about almost 200,000 cubic yards of gravel where that truck is being loaded by the loader in the upper picture. That's right where the bath house. In fact, these two photographs are taken from exactly the same location. So it had come quite a ways. You can go to the next one too, Kath. This is taken from the top of the amphitheater hill, looking down onto the pond. They had a big crushing plant and a rock grinder and a big pump in the pond that, that helped to excavate and remove materials. The pond's about nine acres in size, 12 to 14 feet deep, has about 1.5 million gallons of water in it when it's full. Next one, Kath. Again, from the top of the amphitheater hill, looking south, looking down at the bath house in the upper picture, that's the big gravel pile that went into Fort Point Channel in Boston. So that's where all of Acton's gravel went from the, from the NARA project. Last one, I think. And I'm going to turn it over to Kathy. She'll take you through the, sort of the objective, the goals and objectives of the master plan, how we put it together, the fact that we did have public survey, and then a big team of people working to develop the plan.
Thanks, Tom. I wanted to start off with a annotated map of NARA. This is something we recently developed. We realized that we need to help guide the people who come to NARA as to where things are. I have to say, when I started about 10 years ago working at the park, it was myself and my secretary. Now, we have a much larger staff and we're doing many more things than we did back in 2006. So we're finding as time goes on, we need to get more sophisticated. So here we go. Here's one of our sophisticated devices that we're using. Master plan process has been about two years in the making. We started off by developing a public survey that we timed to coincide with the summer season at NARA, and that's when we're the busiest. That's when we're bringing people in to come to our concerts and events. We are running a summer camp. We have a very active beach. So over the course of June through September, we were advertising this survey, a constant contact survey that we put out in as many venues as possible. In total, we collected 414 responses. And the survey itself, a couple dozen questions, and we also gave the opportunity for people to write in their comments. So as you might imagine, by the end of September, we had quite a bit of material to analyze. We decided to take on this project by involving our entire natural resource. We decided to take on this project by involving our entire natural resources staff. I have a, a staff of four full-time employees in recreation. Tom has two part-time employees who work in conservation. And all together, we worked as a team. We basically sifted through the data and analyzed it. And we realized that as staff members, we had a wealth of experience managing this park. So we took on the task pretty doggedly. We set up meetings where we could all get together and walk and talk the park. And we brought our cameras and we brought our recording devices so that we could make sure that we captured all the information that we talked about collectively as we did our walks around NARA. And we kind of systematically went from one zone of the park to the next. So, in some total, we had a massive amount of material, and we decided to do this project in-house. We decided that we could devote the time, take our time, to compile it and make it make sense from our perspective, incorporating all of the great public input that we got through our survey. So in essence, I think, believe we have a copy of the master plan for each of the board members. This was, we did this publication in-house with our own computer skills. We planned to put it out to a printer for a final print, but this is our draft copy that you have in your hands. And again, as Tom said, it is a coffee table book. We incorporated many, many photographs to illustrate all of what we talked about. So the outcome of all this analysis was that we narrowed it down to six main goals, and under those goals, there are a number of objectives. And just quickly, from a high level, we're developing a long-range park master plan or management strategy. We want to meet taxpayers' expectations. Customer service is number one. We want to preserve, protect, and enhance our park's natural environment, something that's extremely important to us. It's a people park, but it's also a natural area as well. Construct and maintain facilities to meet user needs. Now, this is what you think of first when you think of the master plan. You're talking about facilities. It's a very important component, but it's not the only one. Expand and enhance arts and culture. You may realize that we undergo a lot of planning to conduct concerts and special events throughout the year. Arts and culture is extremely important to us, and we wanted to make that a very big part of this plan. Lastly, although there's no action plan to implement this, if opportunities arise, from our experience, we know that there may be opportunities if surrounding parcels are available, it would be wise to think about expanding the park if and when it's possible. I just wanted to give you a little snapshot of how this data kind of got drilled down. Those were our broad goals that I just mentioned. This is the detail to which we sifted it all down to. After categorizing into these goals, we took all of the numerous action items that we wanted to perform and categorized them under a particular goal. Now, we wrote a big narrative about each of the functional areas within NARA, and what we wanted to do was tie these goals to our descriptive narrative. So what you see in this table is the action item that is listed in each row, what we think it will cost, where we think we can fund it from, and we also have a cross-reference to the narrative in the booklet that precedes it, that gives you more or less the background of why, why do this particular item? Now, all the items in this table are in priority order. So whatever's at the top is what we consider the most important, what's at the bottom is less so. And here's just an example of some cross-referencing. That particular item that I had brought up before is about park security. I just highlighted some text within the narrative, talking about park security here. And some of the things are pertinent to a topic I'm bringing up to round out this discussion, that being implementing a parking fee for the park. So all of these items I've brought up here pertain to that particular item. So in some, in summation, the master plan puts out a 10-year guide to very important actions that we would like to perform over this period of time. And I would say it is a working document. We see us changing and updating as time goes on. Certain opportunities happen, sometimes they don't, and we have to readjust our planning. So this is a working document. And I brought up this particular chart. This is in reference to a proposal that the Recreation Commission has submitted to implement a parking fee at NARA for non-residents. I put together a chart listing how this would work. Parking fees are something that we believe are a new revenue source that we'd like to introduce in order to fund additional hiring for seasonal staff. Over the past several years, we found that the park is in great demand, and we have many people coming, not only from Acton, but from surrounding towns. We found that in order to manage properly, we can't just rely on our existing staff. They are program-oriented. Our camp counselors take care of campers. Our beach staff takes care of the beach. What we really need are park staff, people who manage who comes in, who goes out, and keeps an eye on everyone else who's enjoying the park. So what I have here is a table that shows you that in addition to the fees that the Recreation Department brings in for selling beach passes and for camp fees, we'd like to introduce a new revenue source, parking fees. And this parking fee will help support additional staffing that we require. And I've detailed here that for the coming summer, we would like to be able to afford to pay two additional park rangers and six parking attendants. We propose that for non-residents coming to park at NARA, that they be stopped by a parking attendant, and if they are not non-resident, they will be charged a $5 fee. And in terms of how this fee will offset the costs, I've detailed how many hours we will need to have adequate coverage at the park if we have two beautiful days of sunshine on a Saturday and a Sunday, and we have a lot of activity going on. What makes sense about this proposal is that the fee is going to support the people who are carrying out the task. If we have a rainout of a day, we're not going to be having our parking attendants out there, likely. So we'll be generating revenue when they're working. Just like our beach, when we don't have sunshine and it's cold and windy and raining, we, we don't open our snack bar. It would be the same situation for this particular group of employees as well. So their hours would be severely limited when we don't need them, in other words. So that summarizes everything regarding the master plan, and we'd like to open it up for your questions.
Sure. Questions from the board? Anybody? Katie?
Well, thank you, first of all, for putting together this master plan, reading through it this weekend. I mean, it's incredibly comprehensive. The pictures are, you know, beautiful, and, and you guys did a wonderful job with the layout, and I was glad you highlighted those tables, Kathy. I thought that was one of the, the best parts of the, the document. It was just, it made it very clear kind of what, you know, were the projects you were looking to do, how much, you know, you anticipated it would cost for the ones you thought were potential sources of funding would be, the timeline for doing all of those, and then I really liked, like you said, tying it back to the, the parts of the earlier part of the document that, that, you know, explain or, or, you know, the requests. So I thought it was very well done, and I really appreciate all the work you guys have put into this over the past couple of years. And I have to say too, I was really impressed, you know, I heard about it some at the Recreation Commission meetings, but with the number of responses you got to the survey. I think we do a lot of surveys, you know, in town at different times, and it was a good, a good number of people that, that responded, which I think speaks highly to how much people like and enjoy and, and use NARA. We were just there the other night for the town volunteer appreciation night, and everybody was talking about how beautiful it looked, you know, and we were in the new picnic pavilion and just how wonderful a spot that is. So it, it was a really nice place to do that, and, and, you know, it's always just nice to hear people appreciate this kind of gem that we have that, you know, most, most communities don't have, especially if our size have something of this caliber. So thank you, first of all, for, for everything you did to, to put this together, and I didn't read every single word in it, but, you know, read most of them, and have to, again, have to say it was very well done. And then I just had a couple of questions on the, on the parking. So I think it makes sense, you know, a lot of sense that, as you mentioned, Kathy, the staff would only be there when you anticipate being able to get revenue and, and the need for them. Do you think you'll have trouble, though, finding people who are willing to work without kind of a guaranteed number of hours? Or has that not been a problem?
I don't believe it's a problem. We've put feelers out there, and we have people who want to work weekends.
Okay.
And we propose that it will be probably weekends only. It's only during peak demand times.
Right.
Typically during the week, it's quite manageable. It's on the weekends when people want to have family functions primarily.
Right. And then it seemed like the, the numbers were based on, you know, anticipating 400 cars that were non-resident cars, but it, and, and I might have been reading this wrong just in the recommendations, that it seemed like, on average, in a weekend, there are maybe 440, 450 or so cars. I didn't know if that was at one time then, or, because I would, I would expect that many of those would be resident cars.
Some of the examples I gave were snapshots at a particular time of the day.
Okay.
Of course, there's people coming, people going. There's a lot of turnaround throughout the day.
Yeah. And then do you think you'll do, I know you said mostly on weekends, but do you think you'll institute the parking fee for some of the larger events or concerts as well for out-of-town residents, or would it just be during these kind of busy beach weekends?
It would be during NARA beach operations, which is from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. We don't plan to charge parking fees during our events.
Okay, that makes sense. And then this has nothing to do with the Recreation Department. I, I did just, reading through this and, and reading through some of the quotes that were pulled out, I have to say I was, and again, this is not reflective of the Recreation Department at all, it was just the people that responded to the survey, but I have to say I was bothered by some of the responses. And I want to make it very clear that we are in no way discouraging people from out-of-town to come to NARA, and that we're very welcoming to people not from Acton using NARA. And I think there were a few comments in here that were, you know, that, that were a bit disparaging, A, to people out-of-town, and B, to people that, I think people assumed were from out-of-town because they didn't look or sound like them. And, and I just wanted to, to point that out and mention my discomfort with it, just because it was in our packet and, you know, and, and I, again, it's not reflective of the feelings at all of the Recreation Department or this town, and I know that very, very much. And so just if there's any of the people who made these comments listening to this tonight, you know, I, I just want to say that I'm not supportive of those, and I, that those in no way went into my decision to support this recommendation at all, and, and really it's about the need to, to deal with the parking issues there, and just in terms of managing that, and especially when, although it sounds like not this summer, but especially when the Bruce Freeman comes in and that it, that it will be, you know, a much, probably a bigger, bigger concern or overcrowding issue. So, again, I, you know, I think there are good points people made, and that you made and showed through data about the issues around parking, not great points made about, you know, the kinds of people that use NARA, because NARA is open and welcome to everybody, and Recreation Department has done a great job of making that clear and encouraging all kinds of people to come throughout all of our events, and the variety of events that you guys hold and, and put together. And again, I just want to thank you for that. You know, I tried to go to some of the events in the summer concert series and things like that, and there's such a variety, and they're so well-done, and it's just incredible, you know, who comes here, and it was funny to flip through and see that picture of you with the Jonas Brothers a few years ago, Kathy. So, I know a lot of teenage girls that I'm sure are very jealous of, that you got to meet them. But again, just overall, thank you so much. A lot, a lot of work went into this, and I think it's a really well-done document.
Other members of the board? Peter? Joan? Joan, go ahead.
Kathy, well done, as usual. Where would these parking facilities be located?
Well, our staffing for, our parking attendants would be located at the entry of both the lower lot and/or upper lot, depending on the volume of traffic we're expecting that day. We typically set up a portable tent and table chairs, so they're sheltered from the sun. Of course, being out in the sun all day, you have to be careful.
So they'd collect the parking fee at either spot?
Correct.
Thank you.
Is that it, Joan?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I have, I have a, go, well, I, okay, go ahead, Peter, if you've got a question, I'll, I go last, so.
I mean, I, you know, being a member of the CPC, I think the C, Community Preservation Committee will, will be happy to see this document, and considering future requests for funding for recreation projects. I mean, I, I got to compliment you also about how spectacular NARA is and the programming out there. It's a jewel that lots of other towns wish they had, and this will certainly help keep it that way for a long time. I also got to say that it was a nice coincidence that Nathaniel Allen, a veteran from the Civil War, who won the Medal of Honor at Gettysburg's name fit into NARA, and so it's now Nathaniel Allen Recreation Area rather than North Acton. But I just, can you pull up the slide again of this funding? You're not planning to have all six parking attendants on at the same time, are you, or is, will you rotate among them, or?
They would be rotating.
Okay.
But if we were maxed, this is the max.
Okay.
If they were to work both days.
And those hours are over the whole summer, or is that...
That's a week, that's a weekly analysis. That's for a week.
Okay. So 20 hours for two new park rangers, does that mean they get health insurance from the town for working 20 hours?
No, it does not. They are seasonal workers.
Okay. Did you have, did you give any consideration toward assigning parking places for residents like they do at the, at the train station? Or are you worried that, you know, residents might not be able to park if, because their spaces might not be available that are taken up by non-residents, or, has that been a problem?
We would adjust our parking methods if necessary. It's more or less an issue of being... It's more or less an issue of being able to flag the people coming into the park if there's an overcrowding situation. In other words, we need somebody stationed at the entryways so that we can warn people the beach is full. For example, our lifeguard ratios to patrons have to be within certain comfortable limits for our staff. And if they get exceeded because there's too many people, we want to turn people away at the gate, rather than have them come all the way in and find that they can't get on the beach. So in those situations, we want to prevent people parking on grass, which has happened when we've had overcrowding situations. So we need somebody, I mean, the staffing that we're going to have is going to help alert people before they enter as to what the availability of parking is.
Okay.
Going forward, when the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail is open, we're, we're going to have 11 designated parking spaces for Bruce Freeman users.
Yep.
And the parking attendants will be managing that as well. And if, for some reason, we don't have adequate parking, we can refer them to other designated parking areas for Bruce Freeman Rail Trail.
Okay, I just wanted to expand a little bit for a minute, the discussion into the funding of recreation in general, which I'm learning as I go along. I learned that the, that Budget Stat or Day, that recreation doesn't go through the normal budgeting process. It's all under the town manager's purview. It looks like, from reading some of this, that state statute is basically a revolving fund, that what comes in pays for what the services are, and you're limited to, you try to budget to come in with less than $10,000 surplus at the end of the year. Otherwise, anything that's over that goes into the general fund, right? Is that okay?
That's correct.
And there's been discussions, I know the CPC has been interested in seeing if the Recreation Department could somehow build up a surplus to fund some of the programs that you've asked the CPC to fund, because there's, there's a feeling among some members on the Community Preservation Committee that the town is over-reliant on the Community Preservation Fund to fund recreation capital improvements over other capital improvements in town. I think part of that, obviously, is because recreation is eligible for community preservation funding. But there have been questions about whether you could build up some kind of a surplus to, you know, anticipate future expenditures for improvements. So if you, if, and I don't know how you go about setting your fees, whether they might be too high to, you know, not allow everybody to participate, but if you did have fees that built up a, a surplus, and it went back to the general fund, is it possible for the town to just say, "Well, you know, recreation turned back this much money into the general fund, and we're asking town meeting to appropriate that money back to recreation to fund particular improvements that they need?"
Well, in theory, you could do that. I mean, technically, any, anything turned back is a general, is a general revenue. It's not, you know, usually assigned to any particular department, like building permit fees and things like that. I mean, one way to do it, but we'd have to study it very carefully, is create an enterprise fund, just like, just like sewer, just like ambulance, et cetera. And that way, you can build a fund balance, and that fund balance can be used for capital expenses. So, you know, that'd be one thing for the future we could probably look at.
Yeah, who knew how complicated enterprise funds work? I mean, it turns out so.
I mean, we actually, when, when I was town manager in Westford, we created a, a recreation enterprise fund, so it can be done. But I think we'd have to study it very carefully, because I think one thing we, we don't want anymore is, is enterprise funds that take general fund subsidies, so we'd have to look at it.
Okay, I mean, because there has been, before us, the last few meetings, site plan permits that, you know, we've been asked to waive requirements that developers build sidewalks and make a contribution to a fund. It was always the sidewalk fund. Now it's turning out to be recreation. And I have real questions about whether the zoning, that's appropriate under the zoning bylaw. But in a broader sense, really, this board ought to look at, you know, those kind of issues and make a decision. Should we be using, you know, money that we usually use to build sidewalks to fund bicycle and other, and bicycle programs through Planning Department and Recreation Programs as well? I know the, the Main Street 40B didn't come through us, it went through the ZBA, but, but designates those monies for sidewalk and recreation improvements in the neighborhood. So clearly, that's looking at Jones Field, I assume. I, I don't know who makes the decision. I'm told the Selectman about which, what portion of that $60,000 goes to sidewalks, you know, versus recreation. So there was a lot of questions I have at the board level about how recreation gets funded and whether that's an appropriate process. And, and I have no problem with funding recreation. I'm all in favor, but I'm, you know, I think we ought to have more recreation in town. But whether it goes to sidewalks or bicycles or recreation is a real question. So it just ought to be a policy decision about how we decide that. But anyway, thanks, thanks again for that beautiful space out there. Appreciate it.
I don't mean to cut you short, Peter. If you have something else to say, I will add. We're five minutes late. I have to read two hearing notices. A public hearing of the Acton Board of Selectmen will be held on Monday, May 22, 2017, at 8:30 p.m. in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room 204 of the Acton Town Hall, 472 Main Street, Acton, for National Grid, to install and maintain approximately 64 feet, more or less, of a two-inch gas main in Martin Street, Acton, 32 feet from the existing two-inch gas main at House Number 31, and 32 feet from the existing two-inch gas main at House Number 45, westerly to the entrance of Seal Harbor Subdivision, which is a private way. And a public hearing of the Acton Board of Selectmen will be held on Monday, May 22, 2017, at 8:35 p.m. in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room 204 of the Acton Town Hall, 472 Main Street, Acton, for National Grid, to install and maintain approximately 20 feet, more or less, of a two-inch gas main in Main Street, Acton, from the existing eight-inch main at House Number 279, northerly to the property line of a private way for the purpose of providing gas service to three future homes. We will get back to those in a minute. Any other comments from other board members before I ask my stupid questions? Okay. I have a, I had a question about, like, how do you distinguish between who's resident and who's, who's non-resident? Are you going to have an ID system? You're going to have passes for residents or stickers? Or is it, yeah, I, I don't know if you do that already, and if you do keep counts, if you have an approximate count of the proportion of people who use NARA, who are, who park there, who are residents as opposed to non?
Janet, this would be a, a new enterprise for us. To start with, because we're, we're going into the Memorial Day weekend this Saturday, we're going to depend upon people showing a license, a driver's license, and go by that. What we'd like to do is implement a sticker program in which residents can receive a sticker that they put on their vehicle, and we can simply wave them in.
Okay. And is there, is there any plan at some point, if you find that a lot of the spaces are taken up? I, I don't, if you find that non-residents are taking up a lot of the spaces and, and residents get shut out, are you planning at some point to, to reserve some spaces for residents?
Yes, we may. One of our concerns is about having adequate spaces for people who are coming in for picnic rentals. We can anticipate roughly how many people are coming for any given event. So one of the things we want to be able to manage better is making sure that we maintain space for those rentals.
Okay, and I would echo what everybody has said about this. I have not, I've been looking at it while I've been sitting here, and has, it reminds me of the Open Space Plan, which was really, you know, an opus by the Natural Resources Department and the Open Space Committee, and a whole host of people with lots of pictures and charts, and, and very interesting reading in both the draft and final form. And I'm looking forward to going through this more carefully. But I am, I was really impressed by the slide, the slides showing the before and after. I mean, what was there before, which I had heard was very unattractive, as you would expect, the sort of a sand and gravel pit to be, and, and what has, the transformation has brought us today, so. But thank you both for all of your efforts. And now I will quickly open it up to audience comments, because I saw Kim up here waiting patiently.
Hi, I'm Kim Castens, 294 Pope Road, and I really appreciate the effort that you put into making NARA Pond Area so, Park Area so beautiful for us, and the master plan looks lovely. My question is, you've given a lot of thought to handling cars. What does the master plan say about making it possible to arrive there through other means than coming in a car? Either fostering and making it easier to come by walking, bicycle, or public transportation?
I have a diagram of the park. Hello. You'll notice the blue lines, or teal lines. That is the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail. It merges with the pond walking path, and you'll see that there is a spur that goes into the lower parking lot. So we're preparing to put in bicycle racks to support the increased bicycle traffic that will be coming to NARA, because the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail makes it a stopover. So it's going to be easy for people who are taking that trip to stop in at NARA. And we anticipate also that many people will want to bring their bicycles in their vehicles and park there as a stopping point. Thus, we feel, from Chelmsford's experience, Chelmsford has measured 1,000 visits or trips a day coming through Chelmsford, when they've measured it on an annual basis. It's going to be quite a bit.
Have you given any thought to converting some of those car arrivers into bicycle arrivers?
Well, we're going to encourage it, certainly.
Okay.
Sorry, go ahead, Tara.
Tara Fredericks, West Acton. I just want to talk about a couple of things. First of all, the idea of an enterprise fund. I worry about, as much as I respect all the work and appreciate the work that you do for the community, I worry about the Recreation Department becoming a business. And so I just want to say that I have that worry. Also, I, I caution that if we use our position to, for personal gain, in particular, the celebrity elbow rubbing, which I heard mentioned of earlier, I'm very much opposed to that. But I'm stood up mostly to talk about the access to the parking spaces, because I know a lot of people that come from out of town, and here in Acton, we, we come from a place of privilege. And so I hope that there's going to be a way that people that may not be able to afford, to pay, can get in to use the public facility for free. And I don't know how you do that, except for to wave people on that look like they're having a hard time. But I know a lot of people that do come and use the NARA park that are having a real hard time, and I hate to see them turned away. Thank you.
Anyone else from the audience? All right, now what, what, do you need some sort of formal approval from us of the parking fees? Or is that all under your auspices?
Yes, we were looking for your approval of the parking fee proposal.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation from the Recreation Director to Board of Selectmen for implementing a NARA parking sticker program, per her memo.
Second the motion.
Okay, Katie moves, and Joan seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. There you have it. And thank you, thank you very much for your presentation. And we're letting you get out early, comparatively, so. Now, National Grid, is there somebody here? Hi.
Hi.
You're up.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, we're a little bit late.
That's all right. Which one are we doing first?
Martin Street. The National Grid hereby respectfully requests your consent to the location to install and maintain approximately 64 feet, more or less, of two-inch gas main in Martin Street in Acton, 32 feet from the existing two-inch gas main at House Number 31, and 32 feet from the existing two-inch gas main at House Number 45, westerly to the entrance of Seal Harbor Subdivision, which is a private way, for the purpose of providing gas service to 32 future homes, units. All right, questions, comments from the board? Katie?
So you probably don't, and, and I'm sorry, what's your name again?
Barbara.
Barbara, Barbara, you probably don't know this. We've received a lot of comments and questions from members of the public with concerns, there are general concerns that we, this board's expressed before, and is continuing to look into and work on related to discouraging new natural gas hookups. Both of these applications unfortunately are for new developments, and I think are the prime opportunities where we would like to, again, no offense to, to National Grid, but like to discourage the use of natural gas, and so it's disappointing to see both of these come in. And then the others around the gas leak. So I have a question about if there's a standard procedure that when you're opening road to do these installations, if at the time you repair gas leaks in the area where, if, at least you've opened the road?
I'm pretty sure that if, if it was in the vicinity that they opened up the road, yes, they would, they would need fix the, the gas leak.
And they would have to be, I mean, identified ones that are identified by National Grid? Or are they things that, you know, the town, the town said, "We believe there are natu, there are gas leaks, you know, in this area" that National Grid would be willing to, you know, investigate and repair?
Honest to goodness, I'm, I'm a small fish in a big pond.
I understand, I know, and I, you know, I'm sorry that it's you, Barbara, that gets our questions.
And I would certainly, I'll entertain, I'll give you my card. I'll, I'll put you in touch with someone who can answer those questions for you, like, you know, affirmatively, with a firm commitment to doing that.
Okay. And again, you know, I mean, we've had requests to either deny these or to put conditions on them that, you know, require National Grid to repair the gas leaks. And Janet, I don't know if you want to talk about the quick, you know, decision or advice you were given from council?
Well, before any, we could go further, and we will continue to discuss this and invite comments from the audience. But, yeah, we have gotten, there is a fair amount of concern. This is not the first time. That it's, we've had a number of hearings with the proposed connections, new connections to gas service. And I know that there's an effort afoot involving our Building Department to sort of, sort of explore alternative sources of power and whatnot, just so that when you talk to developers, they, they see a viable alternative. But that still is being worked on. In the meantime, we're having these gas hookup requests. I was concerned about, you know, I didn't know if we could condition our decision, or if we could only deny a permission, or, or what our options were. And basically, we heard from town council that frankly, what some, many communities or a number of communities are doing is they're going the general local bylaw route whereby you can basically require that a gas service or whatever utility do repairs of leaks and whatnot as a condition of approving a gas hookup. I know that there's efforts afoot at the state level to try to get sort of this gas leak problem addressed, and that, I guess, solutions seem to be elusive, or improvements seem to be elusive, and that in the meantime, there are people who often smell gas, and they're concerned about it. And, and it's, well, it's wasteful, it's bad for the environment. There are a lot of reasons, just even practically speaking, you think, "Well, why wouldn't you want to sort of fix them? Because all that stuff is going out." I know it's expensive to try to track them out and open up the road, and nobody likes having roads opened up or whatever, or, or lots opened up, but, you know, the alternative is we sort of just limp along in this current state. So that is, I mean, that is something that I think my colleagues and I will talk about, is the possibility of working on a bylaw to address this issue. But it's my understanding that frankly, I mean, that would require new equipment, it would also probably require some more personnel in order to provide the staffing. So, that is for the information of you and also for the people in the audience. So, anyhow, Katie? Okay. Peter, you have something?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you're saying if you want, if they, you know, uncovered a gas leak, they'd repair it, that's your understanding.
I would say so, that's my understanding.
But I'm looking at the schematic sketch here. You have that in front of you?
It has, it's very little opening, correct?
Right, yeah, I mean, you've got, you basically, you're not digging up the whole street. You dig up where you need to put a new connection in, which is probably two feet wide or something. And then, lay the new pipe in a trench into this new development. Right, so, okay.
Yes.
So, I, the only other thing I would say is, as far as the engineering department is concerned, I didn't necessarily read the recommendation as requiring all that equipment, maybe that's what, what Green Acton meant. But they provided us with the information, it's already recorded by the state or by the gas company itself. It seems to me that, that the engineering department could provide us in our memos what's already been recorded by other agencies. So, we just have an idea in the neighborhood how many gas leaks there might be around these, you know, extensions that they're putting in. So, that'd be my suggestion.
Well, yeah, I agree that if the information, if they're talking about already existing information, but I'm not sure, you know, if somebody on an ongoing basis monitor, actually goes around with these vehicles measuring and, and, you know, or if that's something that needs to be updated by somebody with, with a deep pocket and time, you know, and staffing, so.
I'm sure there are new gas leaks, but Acton participated in a program that may have been in MIPC, but some, some state body came to Acton and went all over, not all over town, but certain areas of town and recorded all the gas leaks, so.
Yeah, but, but it means that there needs to be a concerted effort to get, you know, that, coordinate that effort. And I don't think that, insofar as doing it town by town, I don't think that's a practical solution. So, anyhow, are there any comments, questions from the board, other? No? Okay. And I don't have any other than what I just said. So, first of all, I've got to open, read a couple of notices, and then we will get back to the National Grid matter. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138, Section 12 of the General Laws, that the Board of Selectmen will hold a hearing in the Francis Faulkner Room 204 in the Acton Town Hall, 472 Main Street, Acton, on May 22, 2017, at 8:45 PM on the application of New England Hospitality Group, LLC, doing business as Via Mexicana, for an all-alcoholic beverage license located in 103 Nagog Park, Acton, Mass. The application is on file in the Selectmen's office and may be viewed during normal working hours. And, the Acton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing notice on May 22, 2017, at 8:50 PM in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room 204 at the Town Hall, 472 Main Street, Acton, on the application of New England Hospitality, LLC, doing business as Via Mexicana, 103 Nagog Park, Acton, Mass. Under Section 140 of the Massachusetts General Law, it's very common, victual or licensed, the applications can be inspected at Town Hall during normal business hours. Now, back to National Grid and comments from the audience.
Jim Snyder-Grant, Half Moon Hill. I wanted to thank Katie and Janet and Peter for, you know, noting the letters that came from citizens, including myself, and reflecting those concerns quite accurately, I thought. We keep showing up when there's gas line connections coming for the reasons that you've stated, that locking in fossil fuel use, fuel use for the next 30 years or so, which is what happens when you get a gas, gas connection to new development, is exactly walking backwards from where we need to be moving. And I know that you, Selectmen individually and the town as a whole want to be moving forwards rather than backwards. It was very heartening to hear about the, your, the quick action to contact town council and get a response from the engineering department. A bylaw is definitely something that should be explored. Mothers Out Front, who are here, were instrumental in bylaws in Boston and other, and other communities, so I think there is, there's the will here to, to help make that happen. You've seen the letter I wrote, so I just wanted to add tiny little pieces of information to it. The, the study that you alluded to, Peter, with the specific numbers in it, that was an MIPC study that the town, you know, signed up for along with a number of Massachusetts towns, to understand the purpose of that study, in addition to measuring gas leaks, was to work with highway departments, in our case, engineering, to understand how town departments and utilities can best work together to get these things fixed. So, you know, as you, as you said, opening up roads is expensive and inconvenient. At the same time, most of our roads do get opened up at one time or another over the course of a decade, so it's, the careful coordination between the town and utilities is vital. Having, having, having citizens concerned to make this happen quickly is a factor in helping in that coordination. And we're happy to help, you know, to continue to be, to raise these issues, to raise the urgency of having cooperation between the town and the utilities. The particular study that you talked about, Peter, was 15 miles, in the case of Acton, a little sniffer truck. They would drive around slowly and detect leaks. When they find them, they would stop and measure the concentration of gas in the soil and get a measurement of how large it was in square feet. The, the key thing there in that area is that, as you may have noted, some of the leaks were relatively small, you know, 20 square feet, 50 square feet. But there are huge leaks, 1,000 square feet, 2,000 square feet. And even more urgently, there are leaks that have really high percentage of gas in the air below the ground, greater than 50%, in one case, 90%. This is, this is what takes us into the territory of what's called the super emitters. The, the gas leaks that are a relatively small percentage of the leaks in every town, but account for a very large proportion of the leaks. And as, as we've reviewed before, it's the, it's the leaks during the production and transmission of natural gas that are the, the main climate issue with natural gas. It burns relatively cleanly, but it's all the methane leaking in the air along the way that causes the extreme effects to, to the climate. It's so translucent to infrared that it traps heat really effectively when it gets into the air. So, I don't know if this particular application is going to result in a particular change. I see, I, I've heard Janet's skepticism after talking to town council about conditioning a particular fix here, and the particular opening is going to be very narrow. But it's just, but we still have to show up and talk about it. Because it's just, it's just painful to know that there are 2,000 square foot leaks at, you know, 10 Martin Street, for example, just a few yards away from where this pipe is going in. I want us to keep working together and figuring out how we can get those things fixed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Deborah Seimes, Concord Road. I'm ducking up here for a really quick one, just to say, it is painful. I mean, I could practically weep every time one of these things comes up, because I just feel, as Jim said, like we're going in the opposite direction. And the power of methane, natural gas is 95% methane, to add to the warming, the warming planet is, I don't know if you guys are planning to say this, but it's 80 to 86 times, it has 80 to 86 times over the first 20-year period, the greenhouse gas warming impacts of CO2. So, it's a super, super, super duper greenhouse gas. Also, zero aspersions cast, but Barbara, I wonder, you're like the third person from National Grid I've heard say, I'm just a little fish. I would like you to pass the message that we need, we need, we need bigger fish here.
I know it, I know.
Okay. That's my invitation, thank you.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you, Deborah.
Hi, Judith Aaronstein, Acton, Gregory Lane. I'm here representing Mothers Out Front, and it's an organization that started in Massachusetts, but it's now worldwide. And their mission is basically, as a grassroots mission, to bring together people to see that climate change is not going away and that we want our leaders to start changing What Jim has said in particular about methane and what Deborah said and the numbers, I'm not a numbers person, I'm a mom, I've got three kids, I've got a future that I'm thinking about for my children, and I'm, you know, I have maps here of Acton and un repaired, un repaired leaks, and there's over 150 of them. And the big concern in my mind are these super emitters. If anyone's taken a walk, National Grid, you're doing a great job. There's white lines everywhere, we've met with Cory and three people from National Grid.
Yellow.
Well, the yellow lines are the existing, and the white lines are the ones that are working towards repair. Is that correct?
Oh, it's a green.
Yeah. The yellow is the gas, but apparently when they put white down, it means that's where they're going to be doing the work. There's a lot of lines, there's also a lot of smell. So, anyways, I feel like our job as Mothers Out Front, we're going to be raising awareness, we're not going away. We're planning a, what's called a gas leak tagging event in the fall. And that will be hopefully either tagging at least the super emitters, as many as we know that are on that 15-mile piece that's been tracked, but we may go for all 158 of them. And it'll be a big event, and I think more people are going to be paying attention and are going to be upset. We're not going to want to upset them, like, oh my God, the gas leak, we're all going to blow up. But, you know, to understand that this is real and we need to make a change. And the other thing I didn't say is that Mothers Out Front sort of deals on two fronts. One is switching people over to more sustainable energy, and the other is gas leaks in particular. So, that statewide, they've decided that that's where they want to focus on climate change issues. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Jay?
Yes.
Is she going to submit the map?
Just let them pass it around. Walk it up. Maybe if you have, if you want to send, if you'd submit an electronic version, if it's available.
So, if you go to squeakyleaks.com, and that is a, I believe it's a compilation with MIPC and HEET, H-E-E-T, and you look up Acton, or you can look up any city you're interested in, and you will get a very comprehensive map of all the leaks. Great. Thank you very much. And I'd like to remind Barbara, you had offered to provide a card for somebody who's, who's higher up, we could call. So, would you, would you just give it to Lisa before you leave? You don't have to do it now, but just don't forget to do that, because it would be nice to have a contact person who will, will provide, you know, verifiable reassurances that the leaks are going to get fixed. So, thank you. Yes.
Tara Fredericks, West Acton. It's my understanding that the answer from council, and this is coming from somebody who was a selectman at one time, that the answer from council largely depends on how you ask it. So, if you ask, can we deny it, you get one answer. If you ask, how can we deny it, you get another answer. So, I would urge you to ask, how can we deny? Because I don't think that we're ever going to get the big fish to come unless we deny it. And so, that's the first thing. The second thing is, what are the steps to get a bylaw that is similar to the Boston bylaw in place here in Acton?
That remains to be seen. I think that there's probably, I certainly am interested in that. I thought it was very heartening to, to learn that that was what people were doing, that there was something other than sort of serially dealing with these things and having absolutely no leverage. But, you know, that remains to be seen. I mean, people are going to have to start working on it. We haven't even had a chance to talk about it, so.
So, people who are interested can set up a meeting with you then?
Well, I think, you know, it may be that, you know, because there are a number of models out there, it would be a matter of either, either citizens can work on it, or, you know, we could get council to develop a good model. You know, it doesn't look as if it would be a difficult task, because there are so many templates to, to look at, but we haven't even had a chance to talk about that. Katie, you have a comment?
Yeah, I would say the other way, and I think probably just generally getting the sense of the members on this board, is that we're having our goal-setting meeting in a few weeks. And so, if the selectmen generally make something like this a goal and, and vote it as a priority, then it's something that, you know, town staff and the selectmen prioritize. So, I think that that's, you know, certainly obviously something we're hearing and, and can talk about. And, you know, I think more than one of us would be willing to put forward as a goal. And that, you know, we were planning for a town meeting in December for, related to school issues, but also, you know, usually tack other things on as well. And that, I think, it would be, you know, a worthwhile endeavor if we make it a goal that then we can get staff and citizens and the selectmen to work on putting together a bylaw to bring to town meeting. And Tara, I think that is the how, at least that we're feeling like right now. So, is to put this bylaw in place and feel like we have some, some leverage or, or protection or support to then deny or condition these permits. So, I think we've at least got a way forward on, on part of the issue and are continuing again to work with Deborah and Jim and Green Act and others on dealing with policy and procedure changes related to encouraging the use of alternatives in these developments so that these petitions don't come before us in the first place.
Thank you. And so, my last question is about how to, in the state law that was passed last year, while I think that it was quite weak, there was a provision in there that if the street is opened, that the leaks have to be repaired. The trick is, is to keep track of when they're opening the street and ensure that they are in fact fixing the leaks, because otherwise they can just ignore it and we would never know. So, I like the idea of engineering being on top of when the street openings are and mapping that against the leaks, which we already know, and ensuring that they do. Because if they don't, there's a fine that we can collect through the state, or at least ensure that they get, that the state gets it from them, so that at least we have that fallback. Thank you.
Thank you.
Judith Aaronstein, again. Two things. One is that Cory, Town Engineer Cory York, does meet with National Grid twice a year to coordinate their openings. And the other is that it's squeakyleaks.org, not com.
Thank you for that clarification. I think we would have figured it out eventually, you know, but anyhow. All right, any other comments from the audience? Somebody, discussion, motion, whatever?
Well, noting the continued disappointment and our hope that the leaks in this area will at least be fixed while this portion of the road is open, I will, with those things noted, make a motion to approve the petition for a gas main installation at Martin Street. That's the correct one in front of me right now.
Yeah.
Second.
Katie moves and Peter second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstaining? Okay. You have, you have one more, right?
I do.
Yeah. Okay. The National Grid hereby respectfully requests your consent to install and maintain approximately 20 feet, more or less, of two-inch gas main in Main Street in Acton, from the existing eight-inch gas main at house 279 northerly to the property line of a private way, for the purpose of providing gas service to three future homes. Questions, comments from the board? No? Motion?
Noting the same concerns I made in the previous motion, I will make a motion to approve the gas installation as noted in the petition.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Snyder-Grant, did you have comments?
Yeah, just one.
Sure.
So, for the previous petition, I noted the, the MIPC report by going on the 15 miles of Acton Road. I just want to make sure that the selectmen and the public were aware of another important source of information about leaks, which is that state law now requires that the utilities report leaks that are still unfixed and leaks that were fixed on an annual basis. So, using that report, the, the nearby leaks on Main Street are at 254, 274...
So for the previous petition, I noted the, the MAPC report by going on the 15 miles of Acton Road. I just want to make sure that the selectmen and the public were aware of another important source of information about leaks, which is that state law now requires that the utilities report leaks that are still unfixed and leaks that were fixed on an annual basis. So using that report, the nearby leaks on Main Street are at 254, 274, and 282 Main Street. Those are all very close to Kelly's Corner. As we've noted before, that's not exactly where the very small opening will be, but it's just another indication of nearby leaks that would be the sort of leaks that would be awesome to get fixed at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Miriam Lezak, Kai Street. I just have, I was listening, you know, carefully and part of this, this is to, to install and maintain the gas pipe, this new gas pipe. And it seems like they're not doing a very good job on maintaining the existing pipes. And I'm not sure what we can, I mean, you know, this is what this whole thing is about. But that seems to be a problem. And if they're not maintaining what they already have, should we be letting them put in more? I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Tara Fredericks, West Acton. So part of the state law is that if the street is opened for any reason, cable, water main, whatever it is, that the gas company, if notified by the town, has to respond within a certain time. So that's also an action on our part, that we've got to keep track of everything and coordinate the street opening permits with the gas leak situation. And thank you, Joan, for voting no. Even if it's just symbolic, it's important to let them know that this stuff is coming and that people aren't going to put up with it forever. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? And I don't know, Barbara, if you have any response to the comment that National Grid is not doing a very good job of maintaining what it installs? The, the stuff that's going in is plastic. It's a lot different from the, the old stuff. That's, I'm not a, I know, I keep saying that, but. You're a small fish. All right. We simplify. Or a professional on the integrity of what's under the ground here. Okay. Did, you moved, right?
Yeah, we have a motion, a second.
And was there a second?
Peter seconded.
Peter seconded? Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstaining? Thank you. And thank all of you. I think you will be hearing in the not-too-distant future about this whole bylaw idea, so. All right. Now we have a little bit, a little bit late, 8:45. New England Hospitality Group and Via Mexicana. Good. And I make sure the, push the button on the base there, it's red, yeah, just so that the thing, and I hope that mic is working well. It wasn't. So just please introduce yourselves and provide whatever information you want to about what you're applying for.
My name is Carol Quinones. I'll be the general manager of the Mexicana. We are going to be opening at 103 Nagog Park. Hopefully, all of you are invited to come on opening day. We are applying for a all liquor license. We are focusing mostly on family, you know, fine dining. We are not focusing on the alcohol as a major, but as a part of the dining experience.
Yep. Maybe you could just clarify where exactly in Nagog Park you're located? Is it, when you're, when you're standing on, on Great Road? Is it over on the right?
We're actually right across the gym. So we're on the right-hand side. Where the old, they stop us.
Okay. 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 I know. That's useful reference. Thank you. Any questions, comments from the board? And we're doing, we're doing two things. We're doing, we have, yeah, the liquor license and then we can do the common victual license second, so.
I'll just comment that I, well, and I can ask a question about when you're anticipating to open.
We are relying on the opening day between 30 to 60 days. We don't have a definite opening day just yet.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, no, I have to say, I know you included your proposed venue in with the application. It sounded very good. So I was very excited about when you will be opening, so keep us informed. But no, I thought, I thought it was a good application and we're excited to have you. So thank you and welcome to town. And with that, I will make a motion. Can I just do one motion? Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the alcoholic beverage license and the common victual license for New England Hospitality Group.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. And this menu does look delicious.
You're all invited. You're all invited.
Yeah, no, I love it all. Look at this stuff. Oh, my gosh. All right. So now we're back to selectmen's business. We already did Insulet and we have two items. We have the RAC revised charge and then we have Town Manager Review. Why don't I take the Town Manager Review first, just because I think that's going to be quick? We did have an executive session, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, to talk about the Town Manager's contract. There are a couple of items that we need to kind of pin down and then we'll probably vote at our next meeting at the beginning of June on the final contract. But I'm going to turn it over to the Town Manager because he has a few words to say.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Madam Chair. In about a week, I'm going to be hitting my 40th year in local government management. And after giving it a lot of thought, I am going to announce my retirement effective July 1, 2018, so in about a year. Go through one more budget cycle, which is probably against my better judgment, but nonetheless, you know, it's, it's been a long time, 40 years. Since I'm a Grateful Dead fan, I'm inclined to say what a long, strange trip it's been. But, you know, I've enjoyed working with all the different people in all the different towns I've been in and it's, it's been a great experience. And, you know, I remember when I was in undergrad and I really thought I was going to go to law school and my, my advisor in political science said, "Have you ever thought about public administration?" And I said, "No." But he had had a work-study kind of class and I had done some work in the South Bend Department of Public Safety. So he saw something in me that, you know, I obviously didn't think about myself. So in a lot of ways, Professor John Russe of Notre Dame is really responsible for my career. So, you know, it's made all the difference and I really couldn't think of anything else I would rather have done. So it's still got me around for about a year, but I just thought it'd be, you know, my wife and I have been talking a lot and, you know, it's time to kind of move on to another phase. And also wanted, because I know, you know, I've been through the other side in, in applying for jobs and going through recruitment. And it takes, you know, conservatively, probably nine months to hire a new manager. So, you know, I wanted to be fair to the town. Town's been really good to me and so I wanted to give it a year notice.
Well, thank you, Mr. Manager, and we will have you to kick around for another year. So, well, I won't say my fond farewells just yet, but yes. And of course, immediately, as soon as I learned that you were going to be retiring, I thought, oh, great, you know, we have to set up a search committee. And why did I decide to become chairman this year? So, in any event, but no, it's, it's been, certainly I can speak for myself and probably my board members that it's, it's been a pleasure. And as I said, you're not leaving just yet. So with that, I, there will be time for discussion further, but now on to the, what is actually the last but not least item, which is the RAC revised charge. I have, I guess, some comments. You've all received a set of slides with the RAC, RAC members, at least a couple of them, their recommendations. I have, RAC, the whole membership issue has been sort of bothering me because I know that unfortunately we lost two very good members and so it's down to two residents. And then Matt Mostler, who has basically been sitting in on meetings as, formerly as a resident and now sort of as an Acton Water District representative, but technically I don't, I think he, he was more a liaison than a member. So whatever, I'm not sure that the, the slides are really technically RAC slides, but we'll call them the RAC slides. As you note from the draft that I circulated and what the RAC slides propose, there's a significant gap in responsibilities. I actually have already started to revise them based on some feedback from town staff members. And in particular, I'd like to include some representation from other town committees or entities like, such as the Water District. Of course, doing, saying that, I realize that we have enough trouble sometimes recruiting people to be on town committees, one town committee. And, and a lot of times people are reluctant to be on another committee as a representative. But first of all, I guess, a little bit of background. I've been the liaison to RAC since basically I joined the board in 2010. And I spent a spare amount of time observing not only that committee but other town committees. And then before that, I was on conservation. The input from RAC really was sort of initiated by me last year, or maybe the year before, after the stormwater drafting project was done. And the feedback that the committee provided last year was really comparable in breadth to what the recent slides have sort of proposed. And I think that some people have asked, "Why was there a delay in reviving RAC?" Frankly, I think that a lot of it had to do with the, the timing of the Nagog Pond Treatment Plan proposal. It came in at a time when I was still sort of mulling over how to overhaul the charge. And it quickly, the proposal from, about Nagog Pond quickly became pretty controversial and there were a lot of opinions. And there were, including, there were opinions from individual RAC members and also some of the group who are now sort of helping to propose revisions to the charge. And I really thought it would be precisely the wrong time, although some people would disagree that it would have been the right time, but I thought it'd be the wrong time to sort of revive a committee that might include members who would want to take, you know, sort of an advocate's stance and maybe advocate for positions that would put the board in an awkward position because we're the ones who have, have really created and authorized the committee and could easily disband it because it's an advisory committee and it's subject to our authority. Anyhow, that was the reason. And, and as things progressed and the controversy got worse, I was even less inclined to authorize the committee. And I figured that if people had strong opinions about the project, it would be better for them to weigh in as citizens. On the narrow, proposed narrow purpose, it's been my observation, especially with regard to committees that don't have staff support, that the ones that work really well have a pretty narrow focus. It doesn't mean that they don't have a lot to do. It's just that what they're supposed to be doing is pretty focused and they, it makes it easier for the committee members to do whatever the work is involved. And a lot of times also, there are committee members who actually work professionally in some of the things that they're doing on the committee. But often the broader the scope of responsibilities and especially the more the responsibilities are legally mandated, then the more essential town staff is, and/or consultants and to just to get really big scope things done. But, and I anticipate that right now in the near term, when you're talking about really large-scale water-related tasks, including like the study, there's going to be a lot of reliance on, on not just town staff, but probably we're going to have to get a consultant, people who are professionally doing this kind of work. The second thought I had was that RAC is, notwithstanding the, the broad sort of language on the town website, that RAC historically has had pretty specific tasks initially, or at least the earliest that went on, I'm aware of, was this implementation of something called the CWRMP, which is the Comprehensive Water Resources Management Plan. And it was, at that time, RAC was supposed to provide guidance to the Board of Selectmen on recommendations in the study on long-term water quality. And the study, among other things, identified areas in town where the quality of water was at risk, including due to wastewater management or lack thereof. And so it sort of became code, I think, in some people's minds for a way to justify searing, which was not necessarily popular among many people. The more recent assignment, which just was concluded, it was that the prior board assigned RAC the task of drafting a couple of stormwater bylaws, which were required under the Federal Clean Water Act. And one of the questions I had was, well, should, and I think the committee members also had, was should they go back to this, this water resources study and try to implement or at least analyze those recommendations? And I think some of the concern is that the study is pretty old, even though it was supposed to be good for 20 years. But it's something that is out there potentially to, to pick up again. But even if you have a narrowly defined role, if you have a role that involves a lot of technical issues, sometimes the, the work can be very slow. The stormwater bylaw drafting was really very tedious. I can vouch for that. And frankly, if, in retrospect, if I had been on the prior board, the one that, that assigned this to RAC, I probably would have said, "Get a consultant to do it so that the committee members can do something else." You know, drafting bylaws or any law or legislation is, it's an art, it's a science, it's, you know, it, it's really better done by people who do it all the time because otherwise, you know, if you, if you're, even if you're a good writer, well, if you're a good writer can drive you crazy because the writing in a lot of legislation is just god-awful. But, but if you're a good writer, you want to make everything flow nicely, it can be an arduous task. But because I was new to the board when I became liaison to RAC, I just went along with what had been done by my predecessors. And about halfway, about three years in, when the committee was really, had, had developed a really cumbersome draft that the Conservation Commission had basically penned, I went to the Town Manager and asked if there was any way, there was any money for a consultant to kind of, sort of accelerate the process. And fortunately, we were able to get a consultant who then came in with a brand-new concise template that actually had been used by other Massachusetts towns. And the Actonized version of that is what now the council reviewed, Town Council reviewed, and then various town committees weighed in on, and the special town meeting approved in the fall of 2015. So what, why did I focus on public outreach and education? That was supposed to be a substantial part of RAC's original role. The website says a very, a major component of the committee's duties will be public outreach and education regarding the various water management programs as they relate to the long-term protection of Acton's water resources. And the need frankly for publication about, public education about waters continued over the years, especially in the wake of the death of Mary Michaelman, who really had, a lot of those of you who know, had fervor about water quality. But she also had science background and her communication skills were really great. And she was able to engage non-experts like me and make very technical concepts very comprehensible and, and without being condescending about, you know, how stupid some of us were about water issues. So my approach with the, and I said, I think the mission will change a little bit. I think there's stuff I want to add to that, but I tried to elaborate it in sort of talking about specific responsibilities. But it's to start with smaller steps, smaller scale, and then expand. The Board of Selectmen has the discretion to expand RAC's role as the committee, you know, committee's value becomes more widely recognized and they become better established as a source for the town, for other permitting boards. My only other relevant experience is with the Design Review Board, which had, was essentially a pilot program to introduce the idea of design review to developments. And it was a little bit controversial initially, had a very rocky start. And over time, with personnel changes, and now they have a wonderful chairman, Holly Benjovs, who's, who's just very organized and, and really very professional, they have now gotten to the point where they have a very good reputation in the town. And that we, we broadened the scope of their responsibilities to include not just advising the Board of Selectmen, but all of the permitting boards and, and just to provide advice to people who want guidance from them. It's free. They're all professionals. There are architects, landscape architects, there's an engineer. And so it's, they've really demonstrated that they provide. And so it's, they've really demonstrated that they provide value to the town. So that is what was sort of behind my, and I, because I haven't, I've been the one who hasn't been talking at all about where I see things going. That sort of explains why the draft is the way it is. It is subject to change. I did assure RAC representatives that I, because, well, I see one is in the audience today, but you're not supposed to be here, Barry. But the current chairman is traveling for business, and so I assured them that they would have an opportunity to weigh in, and we would not be voting on anything final tonight. So there would be further discussion. And so with that, I will ask my colleagues if you have comments or questions, or in the meantime, we can open up to the audience half. If not, so, go ahead, Katie.
Yeah, thank you, Janet, for explaining some of your thinking. I mean, I think it's worthwhile about thinking about broadening it now. I understand your point about, you know, sort of starting small and waiting, but I do think we've, you know, heard a lot, and especially with the non-biding resolutions at town meeting, about the request for a group or a committee in town that is dedicated to, you know, more broadly protecting our water resources and offering advice and support to the selectmen. And I think instead of ending up with two different committees, as you point out, it's often hard to recruit people for committees. And so it seems to me it would make sense at this time to really think a little bit more about broadening RAC's charge. And then I just had some, you know, I guess a question about, I mean, their activity is to create and disseminate, you know, impartial information. And, you know, I wonder, without staff support or things like that, you know, who's kind of the final arbiter of okaying their brochures and presentations and things of that nature? Because I do, you know, those are things that it seems to me like it would be worthwhile to have staff or other experts look over. You know, again, I, the sort of kind of professional training or experience you require in here, I think, is good for the membership, but, you know, that can always vary somewhat. And, you know, I, I just think sometimes committees can, you know, great good things, and sometimes they can create things that, you know, maybe aren't necessarily the direction of the town. If it's going to be something that has our seal on it, or sort of coming out and saying, this is what the town of Acton believes, and is impartial and, you know, objective and whatever, I, you know, I, I hope that there's some sort of staff or, you know, BOS involvement in okaying that. And then I also, I wasn't sure about the need to put in the meetings and administrative positions. I mean, those are just requirements of all of our committees, and it didn't, you know, I didn't think we needed to say specifically that RAC has to, you know, comply with our bylaws and state laws and open meeting law because all committees have to. So I, it just felt like we didn't, you know, we didn't kind of need to call them out on that when we all have to do that, and we haven't put that in recent other charges, as far as I can remember. But yeah, I think it's worthwhile to think a little bit more and, you know, maybe play a little bit with kind of expanding that, that purpose and thinking about who, who would approve their, you know, kind of outreach activities.
Peter, you have anything? Joan?
I think the charter, charge should be expanded.
Okay. Okay, it looks like no more board comments, audience members.
Hi, I'm Kim Castens, 294 Pope Road. And first of all, I'm really glad to see that you're going to be rejuvenating the Water Resources Advisory Committee, but I have some problems with the charge as it's written. And I'd like to make three points. And the first is about the purpose of the committee, which is written as Public Outreach and Education on Issues Pertaining to Water Resources. It's my understanding that education and outreach is actually a mandated requirement of the town under the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. And it's my feeling that it is not appropriate for the town to be outsourcing a required, a mandated requirement under this kind of a permit to a volunteer committee and expecting the committee to do this work in their spare time. So our country has a problem with underappreciating education and undervaluing educators, and I see this as a case where that's coming into play. You wouldn't ask, you know, if the town had legal work to do or accounting work to do, you wouldn't say, well, you know, we got a lot of good lawyers and accountants in Acton, let's get some of them on a volunteer committee and get them to do our work. And you shouldn't do that for educators either. If this is truly something that the town is required to do, it should be somebody's day job, and a volunteer committee can be offering advice and guidance and ideas and insights, but this job should not be outsourced to a volunteer committee. Education and outreach is a profession that requires training and education that should be respected. So my second point has to do with the charge calls for the members to have professional training and or experience in water-related sciences and engineering, water resource management, compliance with federal and Massachusetts water protection laws, or public education about water resources. So this is a high level of expertise that you're asking for, and yet the charge, as it's written, doesn't give these professionals any opportunity to make use of their expertise for identifying challenges or opportunities or solutions. And I don't think that you will be able to get serious professionals to work, to volunteer to be on this committee with such a limited and restricted charge. So, you know, the way the charge is written, it looks like these professionals, these water experts sit around until somebody asks them a question. And, you know, that may never happen or happen very rarely. Basically, well, you know, I'm sort of new to the town, and so I love to see what, you know, other advisory committees are being asked to do. And this charge is much wimpier than the charge to other advisory committees. So if we look, for example, at Transportation Advisory Committee, they're given the charge to coordinate local transportation planning efforts. They're given four substantive areas of responsibility, traffic issues, bicycling issues, pedestrian issues, annual appropriation requests. And most importantly, the, this committee is expected to take a proactive, as well as a reactive, role in dealing with these issues. The charge that you've written for the Water Resources Advisory Committee is completely reactive. It has no proactive components at all. And if there's, you know, no questions arising from the board, as it's written, the Water Resources Committee has no opportunity to speak on behalf of the citizens of Acton in concerns having to do with water. So the third issue has to do with the absence of any mention of the Article 26 water study. So that was approved by you guys and voted for unanimously at the town meeting. So if RAC has no role in this effort, then who are you thinking will speak for the citizens of Acton in implementing this critical study? So I don't believe that it can be left up to the Water Resources District. There, they have a different set of priorities that is not perfectly aligned with the citizens of Acton. They're in the business of selling water, and although there's lots of overlap, there's some underlap as well. Somebody needs to be speaking with expertise about water on behalf of the citizens of Acton, and RAC is the natural group to be doing that. That should be part of the charge.
Thank you.
Tara Fredericks, West Acton. I'm hoping to find out from each of the selectmen if they've read the proposed charge from the people that are proposing doing the work. Because I, as a management consultant, I find that when the people who are going to do the work make a proposal about what work it'll be, then the work is awesome, and as opposed to somebody dictating what they might do. So I feel like we need to attract these wonderful professionals that are working on their spare time. And everything Kim said, I agree with, and I'm glad that she spoke so eloquently. But I would like to know whether you've looked at the actual proposed scope and compared it to what Janet has proposed instead. And perhaps maybe take parts of that and ask Janet to include them in the proposed charge. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're right, Janet. I wasn't planning to be here tonight. I excused myself from a Water District meeting after I finished my business. So I could come here tonight because I wasn't sure if Kim was going to make it. But she said most of the things I, I think I was going to say. You pretty much ran down the history of the, of the RAC, of which I am a member. The RAC was diverted to a number of things. It started working on sewers, impervious pavement, and then it was asked to draft two bylaws because of the impending doom and gloom that was about to wreak havoc on, on us because we hadn't done due diligence in creating the bylaws that the EPA requires us to have in place, as we are one of the seven states in the District of Columbia that is governed directly by the EPA as far as water regulations. We are not self-regulating like our neighboring states and New York State. I've got to say, after I read the draft, I was extremely disappointed. It's, I'm not sure how to describe it without being critical, but I've got to tell you, the, well, first, let me start at the top with echoing something that Kim said, and that is that it is the responsibility of the town of Acton under the NIPD's permit, the current NIPD's permit, to do all the dissemination, public objective, impartial presentations. That is the current. The new NIPD's permit is going to quadruple the town's responsibility. So it's essentially marketing communications. Maybe you need to have a marketing communications committee of professional marketing communicators. I don't think that's the kind of work that any of the types of people that you have listed here would want to do. They're not marketing communications people. I have marketing communications people working for me to say what I want to say. I don't do my own because I'm not good at doing my own. That's not my job. I'm not trained to do brochures. Next thing is the, quote, the authorized activities are really not that of an advisory committee, one that should be advising the town on water resources. To me, they look like that of a go fetch committee. I'm not sure the kind of professionals you've listed there are going to do go fetch things. They want to have goals, which leads me to the overall arching thing that I don't believe, and I don't mean this critically, I don't think we have goals for water resources. And that's the first thing I think that's got to be laid in place. You've got to have overarching goals. From that, you develop your strategies, then you develop your tactics, and then you measure the tactics to see if they've been successful. That's how a business operates. That's how I've been taught to operate. I was sent up here and wound up up here because my employer sent me to business school in Cambridge, and that's where I learned my, how to organize a business. The town should run the same way. It has to have overarching goals, and then there can be a discussion of what our strategies should be to reach the overarching goals, develop the tactics, the behaviors that are measurable behaviors to reach those goals. And then you put in measurements to see how successful a group or a committee or a person has been. That's the way successful businesses do operate. I've gone through many, many case studies, and virtually every successful company has One thing I do have to say, I do remember that when the RAC began its first, what we would call diversion, to draft the first bylaw that the EPA required us to draft, the RAC did try to hire a consultant even during that first bylaw. And I remember that the chairman told me he was turned down. Now, you may not have been the liaison at that time. I, I can't recall who it was, but the message that came back was that no money was available, and you needed money to hire a consultant. But I think the RAC did try to hire a consultant. I just don't remember all the specifics at that time because there are some times when you do need outside help to draft bylaws. Because I don't believe, as far as I know, that anyone on the committee was trained to draft bylaws. And so the best they could do is look around and find, quote, model bylaws and try to modify that. And I think that is what was done in lieu of having enough money to hire a consultant that does this on a regular basis. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Barry. Anybody else? Comments? Well, I think what I will, I'm proposing to do is I will go back to the drawing board, and if you have any suggestions, board members, other than the ones you've shared right now, then let me know, and I will add them to the draft. As I said, this is not the final version, and frankly, I was fiddling around with the draft so much, I was adding, taking away, adding, and I just said, okay, I don't have time to deal with this, so I'm going to just put it in a packet and see what happens. And yeah, and this is what happened. So, I mean, I think this is helpful to hear from everybody because it gives me a sense of where, where people want things to go. By the way, Barry, advisory committees created by the selectmen are advisory to the Board of Selectmen. They're not advisory to the town. Yeah, and I mean, that's something that people need to understand is, is, you know, and some, maybe a little more clear in some of the charges, that they're, because the selectmen create them, create them, they're usually for a purpose that the selectmen needs, deems important. So really, if you want to go and advise the general town, it really is under, sort of, with the tacit or express okay of the selectmen. That's the sort of thing, it just, I just don't want there to be a situation where there's an advisory committee that's at odds with where the Board of Selectmen is. It's just, that's, it's not, and I know that there's, there's a hope that the, the committee can at some point become a permanent, which would probably require the adoption of a bylaw, to have it become a standing committee with its own bylaw that it would be responsible for adhering to and enforcing, so.
I don't think, I mean, the other, and again, I'm not speaking to the whole committee. I don't think, I had never heard that they were looking to advise the town. I think the committee understood it was advising the selectmen and was advising the selectmen.
Yeah, no. But you were just, you were just saying, you just said that advisory committee, a committee that's advisory to the town, and I didn't know whether you meant like town meeting or town general residence, or if you were talking about town and meeting Board of Selectmen, so, but that's fine. No, we'll revisit this at the next meeting, so, thank you. Yes.
Tara Fredericks, West Acton. I've hung around with these guys for a while, and I never heard them ever say that they were thinking of advising the town. They always spoke as advisory to the Board of Selectmen, you know, and I think it's really valuable to have them advise you and be proactive and say, hey, guys, there's this thing coming up that's important that we need to be aware of, and that if we don't have them be that proactive, then we'll miss stuff, which has happened too often. And I think that I look forward to, I love the scope of work that they had, and I would be so happy if they were willing to engage in it because it's a lot of free labor. And so I hope you revisit the scope of work that they drafted. Thank you.
Thank you. So, motion, I think we're done. Motion to adjourn. Yes. Is there a second? Or shall we stay here all night?
I'll second that.
Okay, Katie moves, and Peter seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining. Thank you.